So, good evening, everybody. I'll call. Tonight's meeting to order. I'll say a few words about logistics. Anyone who's joining us remotely, please change your display to indicate your first and last name, so we know who we're talking to, who's talking to us. Anyone who speaks, we'd ask you to start by stating your name and where you live. And we, for most of the meeting, we ask you to keep your comments or questions to under three minutes. If you're speaking about a specific agenda item, please keep your comments germane to the topic. And anyone who wishes to speak must be called on by the mayor. Once you're called on, you may make a statement or ask questions, but the council generally does not engage in the back and forth dialogue with the public in this, in meetings. If you speak out of term, turn, discuss non-german topics, go on too long, et cetera. You may be interrupted and asked to adjust, just your comments or behavior. Counselor Sheridan is appearing remotely, so I ask him to introduce himself for the, for the record.
Jim Sheridan, City Councilor, District Three.
Thanks, Jim. You all have the agenda in front of you. There is a request to pull the item nine, and so without that, can we deem the agenda approved? Hearing no objections, we'll consider the agenda approved. Next item on the agenda is general business and appearances. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the council on any topic that is not on tonight's agenda. We ask you to limit your comments to five minutes in length. And I see we have a delegation from Montpelier High School. Why don't you come on up and tell us who you are and what you want to talk about? Welcome. Thanks for coming.
Thank you for having us.
I am Olivia Schornberg, a senior at Montpelier High School.
And my name is Alaga Mala, and I'm also a senior at Montpelier High School. We're here today representing Vermont Future of Education Team, and we are planning to present similar information with a little more of a structure to the legislature in February. So, we are composed of thirty students from three different high schools, Randolph, White River, and Montpelier. And, sorry, thank you. And we have met for over nine hours as of yesterday, the eighteenth. We are here to discuss the potential actions of the redistricting task force, which you are probably all aware of. The redistricting task force appointed by Governor Phil Scott has no members that are current students or educators, leaving a major gap in representation of people who currently experience our school systems and who will be directly affected by the changes being proposed. The purpose of our Future of Education team is to attempt to bring student voice to this redistricting process. Superintendent Michael Clark, from the Orange Southwest School District, and Libby Bonesteal, the superintendent of Montpelier, have been present and are a part of this team.
From discussing with the other student representatives at our retreats that we've had from Randolph and White River, we realized the differences between our different school communities. There are differences in flexible pathway opportunities that are available for students. There are differences in the strengths of our school communities, of our school communities and the relationships within them. Student-to-student relationships, student-to-teacher relationships, and staff interrelationships. Some students stated low level of support from their teachers, and some stated high levels of support. With this information and collaborating with each other, we created questions based on the discussions that we had in our workshops. We went back to our individual schools and asked these questions to students and staff in the form of circles that we led. What makes a great school? What is your school resisting that you think would be important to your education? And what does education that prepares you for the future look like? We found in every discussion at our respective schools that teachers and students reached the same conclusions as we did in our workshop, talking with each other. Everyone unanimously agreed that a great school consists of three separate tiers. First tier being a strong community, like including the previously mentioned student-to-student, student-to-teacher, and inter-staff relationships. Teachers in particular in the circle at Montpelier stated that they wanted to improve communication with their students' parents in the form of parent-teacher conferences. The second tier is involving flexible pathways and student choice. At Montpelier, we're really lucky to have a person like Matt McLean have his role at Montpelier High School, a flexible pathways director. But other classes at White River and Randolph do not have someone who fills that role. Classes, we want to improve and create forms of classes and alternative programs that are individualized and include hands-on learning, and that are more engaging for students who learn in alternative ways. Our third tier that we all unanimously agreed on was that after high school graduation, students want to feel more prepared to function as an active member of society, is how we phrased it, involving mandatory classes on studying current events, cooking, and learning more about how to manage your personal finances. We also wanted to discuss having mandatory community service for certain Vermont schools.
We are looking forward to presenting all of this to the legislature in a couple months. It is very important that these voices are represented in the changes currently being made by Phil Scott's redistricting task force. At Montpelier, we have been extremely lucky to have experienced many alternative opportunities to move through our education in a way that engages and excites every single student, no matter how differently they learn. We do not want these opportunities to be replaced in a uniform curriculum with graduation requirements of the past. Because of this, it is vital to not just our community here, but the communities of all school districts to make sure that our voice and your voices are heard. We encourage you all to reach out to our local legislatures and state representatives and express how much this issue truly matters to every one of us. Thank you for your time.
If there are any questions, too.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Would you like to introduce your colleagues? Are they, are you guys part of the team, too?
They are also youth committee members. You want to say hi?
I'm Ursula and I'm a friend.
I'm Skylar Barnard and also.
Great.
Yeah, we got two sophomores, one.
Great. Thanks for coming and thanks for doing this work. Anyone else? Adrian?
Yeah, so I'm just gonna take a moment to just reflect a little bit of what's been on my mind over this past week and and just thinking about when we had our offsite, I said offsite, I keep saying offsite, when we had our when we had our retreat, yes, offsite is my word. We had our retreat and we talked about our council values. I feel like we have strayed from council values. And, you know, just after last week, I had guests in the audience. One was a fifth grader. And the tone of our meeting and from within and public comment that seems to be getting more agitated and angry, I sat here and watched my friend, who's a fifth grader, almost in tears. And I think that that is unacceptable behavior. And I know everyone on the council here has expressed concerns, but tonight I wanted to share a statement to you all and and hope that we could work together in a positive way, lead with kindness, lead with empathy, and really put ourselves in a professional manner. And so what I want to do is speak about the environment that we create as leaders and the impact that our collective behavior has on the city staff, on one another as council, and the community that we serve. Recent discussions and comments made in this chamber have highlighted the need for us to reaffirm the standards for ourselves. There are strong feelings, and people are very passionate about the topics that we talk about, and debate is a part of democracy. But I feel that it is so essential that our words, and I think more importantly, the action that contribute to a safe, respectful, and I think productive setting for everyone involved. So, we all ran for office because I'm assuming we all care deeply about Montpelier. So, with that, I feel becomes a responsibility that we have to lead with integrity. There has to be respect, and there has to be professionalism. While we definitely disagree at times, and that is true, and it's very healthy, our disagreements must never compromise safety, dignity, or well-being of anybody participating in city government. So, I want to acknowledge the impact of our tone and the conduct that this can have on our staff. You all come to work every single day, and you commit yourselves to our community. When conversations become adversarial or even when distrust overshadows collaborations, I can only imagine that it's an undue stress on your morale. The amount of time you spend on FOIA lawsuits, responding to negative comments, one is our taxpayer money. How much money and time are we spending when we're not focusing our time and energy on what matters most? Is really, really upsetting to me. And this, you know, we strive to create an environment where staff can focus on their work. That's what we want. And without feeling overwhelmed, right? There's conflict, and there's unnecessary pressure. Who wants to come to work feeling like that every day? I wouldn't want to do that. And I feel that the benefits, that benefits not only the organization, but our entire community to focus on this in a positive way. No one, staff, elected officials, or residents should ever feel unsafe or disrespected during a public meeting or in your workplace. So, as city councillors, we, we set the tone for this. This is our job. We cannot expect civility and constructive participation from the public if we don't model this ourselves within our organization. So, I believe deeply in open communication, transparency, and I feel like we have to rebuild the trust within ourselves as a council, but also across the organization with staff and in our community. So, for that trust to grow, we need an environment where concerns can be raised, I think respectfully. Differences can be discussed productively, and everyone feels secure and contributing to their voice. So, my commitment, my commitment myself, Adrian Gill, is to work towards a culture where respectful dialogue is the norm. And I'm going to be calling people out if they're not following this norm, and I'm not going to be afraid because it has affected my mental health when I come to city council and I'm having people yell at me. I have fellow colleagues really making me feel unsafe. And, you know, I think we all have different perspectives, and they need to be valued, and we need to maintain a safe environment, both for staff and for each other. So, I ask that collectively, council here today, we need to recommit together to these principles so that we can continue to serve Montpelier both effectively, collaboratively, and with the dignity that our community deserves.
Thanks, Adrian.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Yeah, Adrian, I just want to say I really appreciate that. I completely agree. And I want to work with you as well to make sure that we have the kind of environment that invites productive public participation. Thank you.
I'll also just chime in, say thank you. You speak for me as well. I, I will join you and hopefully everybody in committing to trying to make all of our public meetings dignity-centered and places where people are respected and can disagree and can share their views and not, and not feel unsafe. And, and you're right that we set the tone, and we did agree to group norms at the beginning of this year. And one of the group norms we agreed to was that we would call each other out when we weren't following it, and so I'm definitely committed to that as well.
As Al.
Yeah, we, we agree to we agree to our behavioral standards every, every year when we, when we join the council and start the new session. Unfortunately, it, you know, I know it affects, it affects us all, affects us all differently, and I appreciate your talking about it publicly. And I think we can all together make it work a little better.
And Pellen.
Yeah, I agree with all the things you've already stated. I just want to mention one more thing as being a woman elected official. For women, it is, we have so many obstacles to serve on the seats. And when we start to serve, all this negativity really impacts other young women who wants to come and serve here. So, it will be great if we can model a future they can feel also safe and they want to come and serve here. And I want to highlight that sometimes, maybe because of our role, we think that, oh, this is not against the law. This is not against the policy. I understand all these things, but also we need to do what is right. Not only, oh, it's not against this or that. Let's do what is right for our community. So, thank you, Adrian, again, talking about this and everyone sharing your thoughts. Did I, did I talk too much?
No, no, no. No, I think it's just fine. We've got some busy meetings coming up, but don't be surprised to see a fuller discussion of this on, on an upcoming agenda. Anybody in the room would like to address again? Steve?
Before I talk about the safety emergency at Country Club Road, I need to address something that appears on tonight's agenda. This is for service to the clerk and to the mayor.
Yeah, I'm not served.
You're served. The, the city keeps calling this threatened litigation, and that's misleading and it needs to stop. This is not threatened litigation. This is active litigation.
Steve, if this, Steve, you're talking about something that's on the agenda. You, you just told.
The agenda threatened litigation. I'm talking about active litigation.
Okay, move on, move on to another topic. This, you're not, you're out of order.
I complained on the twenty-first. I served to complete the sum of the exhibits on the twenty-second.
Steve, move to another topic. You're, you're out of order.
I've got five minutes. I can't.
Okay, folks, I'm going to call a recess. Let's all leave the room.
It's bold view of the city clerk and the mayor during the public meeting on video. Your agenda tonight calls it threatened litigation, and that is simply false. The city keeps playing games with service, with waiver, and the truth is service occurred a month ago. Calling this threatened is an attempt to pretend the case isn't real or isn't active or sometime, somehow hasn't begun. I'll continue when you return.
All right, Mr. Whitewiz, Mr. Whitaker, if you have some other topic to talk about, you're welcome to do so for whatever time you have left.
Yes, this culture of denial and avoidance is exactly what brings us to the next issue, dangerous brownfield violation. The same pattern, avoiding responsibility, pretending problems don't exist, looking the other way is now putting children and workers at real physical risk at two oh three Country Club Road. The city's own documents received today prove that they are preparing to trench contaminated soil without state approval. At nine twenty-eight this morning, the city sent me eight documents under the Public Records Act response. Those documents show trenching and soil disturbance planned on the brownfield without permission or approval, without a soil management plan, without a safety management plan, without dust control procedures, without air monitoring, or without notice to Turtle Island Children's Center. These are the city's own emails. These are not allegations or speculation. City staff discussing digging through contaminated soil before the threes and not mentioning the state requirements at all. The contamination is real and the danger is immediate. Stone environmental and the state already identified arsenic, mercury, lead, and heptic chloroepoxide in the soils at that site. You do not trench through that material without oversight. You do not dig it up next to a childcare center without a plan. You do not let toxic dust flow across a playground. This is reckless and preventable if the council, if the council steps in. I'm asking the council to immediately direct staff, contractors, or consultants to halt all trenching, digging, augering, grading, or soil movement at the Country Club Road until the D E C, Department of Environmental Conservation Commissioner, signs off on a soil management plan and a health and safety plan and approves those activities. That is the requirement of Vermont law and the subsequent I rule, which is propagated by the Department of Environmental Conversation. This is not a political issue. This is not a procedural issue. This is not a, this is a public health issue. And your credibility and responsibility as a governing body are on the line. The same pattern of avoidance that led you to mislabel active litigation as threatened is now showing up in something far more dangerous, ignoring brownfield rules designed to protect children and the public. You have a chance tonight to correct both. Acknowledge the reality of the legal situation, prevent an unnecessary dangerous mistake at Country Club Road. I have a, for those of you who demonstrate a willingness to read it, I prepared a very factual and fact, source reference document proving that most of Kelly's rebuttal editorial in The Times Argus was false. And I can prove it. You just have to care enough, and that respect that you don't show us, you get back.
Thank you, Steve. Is there anyone else in the room who'd like to address the council? I see a couple of hands up on the, on Zoom. Meredith Warner?
Hi, my name's Meredith Warner. I'm a resident of Montpelier. Some of you might know me through my professional work with an agency that serves Montpelier, but I'm here tonight to speak to you as a person who just lives here, and you are my counsel. I swear that I did not plan this, but I did come here to say a few things that I think just reinforce some of the things that Counselor Gill mentioned. I've had, in my professional life, the deep pleasure of working with many of the city staff. I've worked with folks in the planning department. I've had a lot of interactions with zoning, facilities, PD, fire department. Your staff are amazing people, and they don't get told it enough by people like me. And I know you all receive a lot of negativity, and I'm here tonight to, I hope, encourage a positive culture and a commitment to also coming into the city council to share positive feedback when things are going well. I can tell you that through my professional work, I've seen in the last six months just a real commitment to working with my organization. That's my personal opinion. Again, I'm speaking for myself. And I want to express my gratitude to the council and to, especially to your staff who have just been incredibly accommodating and who I know are operating in a really challenging space with a lot of complexity and a lot of negativity. And it's just really important that you all know how great, we all know your staff are, and I especially just want to shout out to Kelly, who, as she's been in this interim role, has just been available, great to connect with, really positive. And I can't say enough good things about the relationship that the institution I work for has been, the, the relationship we have with her now. And I really do think that that, that she is creating some of that positive culture alongside the staff. And I would just want to lift that up. And then finally, I'll also just say, like, it is intimidating to come to a city council person in any capacity when you know that your comments might be followed with accusations and just commentary that is hard to hear. And so I just want to encourage you to continue to think about how to create that positive culture and make space for people to not feel intimidated to come in and speak their, their mind and be part of that dialogue. So, thank you, thank you all, council, for the work you're doing. I know it's also really deeply challenging, and thank you to all the staff.
Yeah, thanks, Meredith. Zach Hughes.
Zach Hughes, Montpelier. I was going to speak on this last week, but given Stephen Morgan's passing, I didn't want to do it then. I, I do want to echo everyone's take on this, and I wanted to say it is y'all who hold the tone. It is whoever the body is that holds the tone. A couple of schools of thought, you guys, y'all have a group of norms, and I appreciate that. Every meeting I start, we usually go through a, a basic thing to remind us what we intend to, to do that night, like learn something or something like that. I find that useful. But I, I think it's really difficult because, you know, when people don't feel like they're being heard, things can get kind of odd, and I'm urging the, I'd like to tell a quick story in less than five minutes. I was, I had an impression made upon me because I was thinking about that, about the fifth grader that was in the audience last week, and I was a high schooler in the audience, or presenting to the school board in the late nineties. And they left a very bad taste in my mouth at how they acted toward our presentation. So, a body is very powerful. They convey things, and I just, I hope we can keep, everybody here, including the community, can continue to work together. Thank you, and I yield back to mayor.
Thanks, Zach. Anybody else who'd like to be heard? I'm not seeing any other hands raised. So, we can move on to the consent agenda before we. So we can move on to the consent agenda. Before we vote on the consent agenda, we'll split out item F. It'll still be on the consent agenda, but we're going to vote on that separately because of potential conflict of interest with one of the members. That said, is there a motion to approve consent agenda items A through E?
I move we approve consent agenda items A through E.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And is there a motion to approve consent agenda item F?
I move we approve consent agenda item F.
Ben, do you want to say?
Yeah, I just want to say the Farmway project, that's a project that my organization has worked on now for a couple of years. And it just didn't feel right to vote on it, but I'm pretty excited about the project.
Yeah, me too. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And one abstention. Okay. Thanks. Moving on to item six, fiscal year and financial report.
So while Sarah's getting set up here, it's going to be Sarah's show for, you know, the next couple of items. Yep, of goodness. And I know she has prepped some really good memos that are part of the record. So I hope everybody's had a chance to take a look at those, but she is going to kind of walk you through the nuts and bolts of each item. Can just talk about where we ended up in twenty-five and that will help kind of set the deck for where we are in twenty-six and where we're going in twenty-seven. And so it looks like Sarah's ready, so I'm gonna let her have at it.
Hey, Sarah.
Hi, I'm hoping we can keep it under the sixty-five minutes I'm allotted. So Sarah Lefroy, the Finance Director for the city, I've prepared some really great memos, I think, that highlight all the details related to these different items, but I do have a set of talking points I'd like to go through and then open it up for discussion. I'll try to keep them quick. So for the twenty-five financials, this year was tough. Twenty-five, we had significant transitions in the city with leadership changes, operational adjustments, and continued recovery from flood impacts and broader economic pressures. These challenges created variability across our funds, but also demonstrated the resilience of staff, the strength of our financial systems, and the importance of disciplined financial management. Citywide results show a combination of positive and negative outcomes across the general fund, enterprise funds, and our smaller governmental funds. Some funds performed better than expected due to strong revenues and efficiencies, while others reflect structural challenges and timing issues. The city spent much of the year under a spending freeze, which helped stabilize results and protect fund balance. The general fund did end in a surplus. You know, I had you all terrified and I'll be honest, I was there myself. We got lucky along with many things breaking our way and tight management and leadership. We had revenues exceed the budget by more than eight hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. This was driven by stronger delinquent tax collections, rebounding on the local options tax post-flood, higher ambulance revenues, and a one-time increase in state pilot, which will also have a negative impact on our twenty-six. On the expenditure side, we faced pressures from staffing transitions, overtime, technology replacement and migration, health insurance shifts, equipment repairs, and winter operations. Importantly, that additional one hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars of statutory pilot payment will not continue in FY twenty-six.
Can you talk more about that just real quickly?
Yep, absolutely. So it's in statute that we would get this one hundred and eighty-four thousand dollar payment. The wording talks about when we reach full pilot, that potentially going away. And so that's what's happened here. We are receiving full pilot and they paid us in twenty-five full pilot plus statutory payment. And alerted us after that that they weren't going to claw it back, but we weren't going to be getting that again. And unfortunately, that happened after the twenty-six budget was already built, assuming we would get both.
And for people who don't live with the budgets the way some of us do, full pilot means that the state is paying exactly what they would be paying if those same properties were subject to our property tax.
That's correct.
So people who say, well, the reason we're having trouble making our budget is because the state doesn't pay property taxes, not really accurate.
No, they pay a moof of taxes and so.
There you go. Just add a quick item there. There are two line items in the budget and the revenue lines and you'll see it. Just so if you're tracking this sort of thing, which I imagine, you know, you will be as we work through the process, we can identify the exact code, but you can actually see it in the budget lines.
Yeah, you can see where it came in over and then you'll see it in twenty-six. I know I owe you guys some financial reports. For those who'll be coming, you'll get a September quarterly and an October update. The pilot money doesn't come in until November, but it has been received and we indeed are short the statutory payment. So any overage we see in the general fund, which was about two hundred and forty thousand, you know, will immediately offset that payment in twenty-six that we did not get. So that's just important to note. Our enterprise funds in water and sewer ended the year with big surpluses. That's not actually available cash. That's a reflection of our investment in capital infrastructure and it's related to grant funding and proper accounting recording of moving those funds from ARPA and into the enterprise fund. And so it shows that we've made really good progress towards meeting long-term capital needs and we're continuing to invest in our infrastructure. You will see that there are some funds that are smaller that are showing deficits. Most of these are due to timing of grant revenues or specific operational needs at the time that weren't budgeted for. The parking fund continues to face a structural challenge, reduced demand, pandemic impacts, and downtown disruptions, and ended with a two hundred and fifteen thousand dollar deficit. This is the second year in a row that this fund has run this deficit. We got incredibly, we were incredibly fortunate with the Budget Adjustment Act and the funds we've received from that in the prior year and were able to allocate that exact amount to reduce the deficit in twenty-four. So we only had a few thousand dollar deficit then. This year, we don't have those funds available. So we are actively working on restructuring the present fund and figuring out what that looks like as we move ahead. And then again, District T operated a deficit similar to past years, which is largely driven by the unbudgeted depreciation. Despite this being a difficult year, strong financial oversight and staff resilience helps mitigate external pressures. Maintaining progress towards our fifteen percent fund balance policy target remains essential and essential for long-term stability. While certain funds, especially parking, require continued attention, the city's overall financial position did worsen given all of the things that happened this year. So just in closing, there's a full memo in the packet that provides a more detailed explanation and a complete budget to actual report. Our goal is to ensure transparency and support informed decision-making as we operate within a very tight twenty-six and prepare to build the twenty-seven. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions. Very detailed financial report in your packet, but I have to say, given everything that happened and the ups and downs and the variability, this was the best case. I thought for sure I would be presenting a deficit in the general fund to you all today.
Thanks, Sarah. This is really great and it actually does bespeak the excellent work that you and other members of the city staff have been doing. Any questions, Ray? Sorry.
I would just echo that, like, it's not luck, right? It's like hard work. So thank you for all that you did. Can you talk more about the unbudgeted depreciation? Is there a depreciation schedule or? Or it's just?
No, it is intentionally not budgeted because in the District Key Fund, you know, we really are struggling to keep rates reasonable and affordable. And so if we were to budget for depreciation in the District Key Fund, it would drive up rates significantly. And so we actively make that decision every year. If this year I'd like to show it in there and show a budget deficit, which is not what we've done in the past, but I think it's a better representation because we know we have that coming. And we know we're going to end the year with a deficit when we show it that way. So that's my plan for District Key. So it'll look a little different than the past, but it will at least capture that depreciation that we're not adequately budgeting for. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, Pellen.
Sarah, again, and I know that we had a very small discussion about parking fund and District Key Fund when you were presenting those items before. So it is almost four hundred thousand deficit, right? So will be some kind of plan in the proposed budget to, I know that we cannot make them zero, but at least make them a little bit less. Thank you.
I mean, yeah, if you wanted to increase the budget in the District Key Fund, we could do that to help mitigate that deficit. I wouldn't recommend that, just given where we are in the climate and the rates for the users. I just don't think it's what's best for them and the system as a whole. We do need to revisit the whole District T and figure out the path forward and what that looks like, but I don't necessarily think in budgeting for depreciation and increasing the rate is the right path at this current juncture. But that's my opinion. You guys can have a different one. That's totally fine. With the parking fund, we're working to structure that differently. We're hoping with the return of state workers, pushing cars out of those lots and now onto the street and with some ramped up enforcement, you know, we can see that fund turn around along with reduced costs. That fund does have a fund balance and so it's not in the red in total. It was just in the red in the last couple of years. And pre-pandemic, it was doing well and favorably and we were able to build that fund balance. And so if we can get back to that, it'll allow for us to repave the lot and do that work and it can be self-sustainable based on those feeds. We just are in a tricky climate right now when it comes to parking and population in the downtown.
So one more thing. Also, last year, we talked about merging some departments and I see that parks and recreation. I don't know, is it for your Kelly? Are there any plans thinking from that perspective? Like, because most of the places, at least at the TV show, right, it's parks there. Can we do the same thing?
And that goes really.
I don't think so, but again, because other departments seem okay. Just the suggestion, I'm not saying that let's do it, but are there any plans?
Yes, I think that's a great conversation in the next item when we talk about budget goals and targets. You know, I do think stewardship of the parks versus operation of the rec are a bit different, especially at the volume of what we do in the city of Montpelier. I do want to say that given all of the budget cuts in the last couple of years, we have had to be really creative and have gotten really great at sharing staff and sharing resources. And I think that's how we've been able to keep providing services at a similar level that people were accustomed to seeing, even though it has been incredibly difficult.
Anybody else with any questions? All right, great. Thanks, Sarah. You can move on to your next item. Don't go anywhere.
Perfect. So I have another set of talking points here.
This is budget targets and priorities for fiscal twenty-seven.
Yes. And so over the past four council meetings, staff has presented budget workshops outlining our current financial picture, long-term pressures, and structural needs. These sessions review the municipal budget framework, District Key and Parking, Water and Sewer Master Plans, and a detailed look at our capital improvement plan. Tonight, we begin the FY twenty-seven budget build. My goal is to frame the decisions ahead and seek your guidance so staff can prepare a balanced, responsible, and forward-looking FY twenty-seven budget aligned with council priorities and Montpelier's long-term fiscal health. Montpelier enters another challenging budget season as inflation, rising personnel and benefit costs, aging infrastructure, and increased service demands continue to place pressure on maintaining current service levels. Some key indicators that have been considered in the past are related to CPI. Nationally, CPI in September is three percent and in August, it was three point three in the Northeast, which is our region. The Social Security COLA is also two point eight percent this year and our health insurance premiums are projected to increase ten percent for the first half of the year. And I'm estimating an additional ten percent for the second half of the year, which is not as bad as the prior year, but still, you know, it is a big pressure on the budget. And so even with no service expansion, these factors create significant upward pressure. Fuel, utilities, road salt, equipment, and construction materials remain high-cost drivers. Deferred capital investments also grow more expensive each year due to inflation and borrowing costs, along with the cost to keep those assets in service. So as we head into this budget build, we are looking that we can reflect the council's strategic priorities, especially as it relates to housing, economic development, and infrastructure. These priorities will provide the framework for balancing needs against limited fiscal capacity. Guidance that was provided to the departments as we work to build our budgets is that there are five core objectives. Fiscal responsibility, operational efficiency, service sustainability, capital stewardship, and alignment with council goals. What we're looking from you as a council is to answer a few questions and to provide us with guidance. Those key questions I posed in my memo, but I'll go through them here. Do you have a targeted overall budget increase or cap? In previous years, council has directed staff to use CPI, to use CPI plus a two-cent increase for infrastructure, items similar to that. Also, what are your primary goals and priorities for this budget, particularly related to infrastructure, housing, and economic development? Are there areas of the budget that you want protected from reductions? Or conversely, are there areas where reductions are preferred or expected? What level of service reduction, if any, is acceptable to you? Examples may include program scaling, delayed hires, reduced hours, or modified service delivery. Also, how should we balance operational needs with capital needs, including the pace of deferred maintenance and long-term infrastructure investment? Your guidance on these questions will shape the parameters for building the FY twenty-seven budget. FY twenty-seven is the first year also with the one percent local options tax, and that will factor into our revenue. Allocation of these funds will be discussed separately in the next item, but it's closely tied to your overall budget strategy and should be considered alongside tonight's discussion. In closing, municipal budgeting is always a balance between aspirations and limitations. We face rising costs, aging infrastructure, increasing expectations, and must make choices that reflect both community needs and fiscal responsibility. With clear direction from the council, we can craft an FY twenty-seven budget that is disciplined, realistic, and positioned to support the community's long-term stability and growth. And so with that, I also wanted to note that we aren't going to be doing budget videos this year. Based, we did these workshops and then when I go back and look at the videos, it's me that's watched them over and over again. Not really the public, so I just want to save everybody that pain and suffering this year. But we also wanted to float the idea like of a budget tour for all of you to take you through maybe departments and different facilities so that you can get a sense of what you're really looking at aside from just the numbers and us talking about it. Also, I wanted to note that we will have a budget book available. If you want it in paper or electronic, that would be good to know in advance before I make paper copies, though my, no paper?
Paper, please.
Paper? That's good. I like the paper version because I mark it up and write all over it, so I get that. So I'll do a few paper and leave that. So that makes my life a little easier. I know. I will do that, too. I promise. We're building in a spreadsheet this year instead of with the ClearGov software because we cut that. So it's been interesting. Yeah, no, we can, I can absolutely provide spreadsheets. And so the budget book will become available on the tenth. I would love to be able to get it to you before then. I just, I can't. You know, we will get you a full packet and we will present the city manager's budget on the tenth and then you will have time to review that packet and come up with questions or things you need to address. But the hope tonight is that if you can help answer those questions and provide us, you know, with really strong guidance about what's important to you and important in this budget, we can come to you with a budget in December that maybe you're like, yes, this is it. And we also, you know, plan to come with options of things that didn't make it in to meet your target that you could also consider if you wanted to add. And so where we're at.
We did a public survey, right, budget? Are you planning to do it this year, too?
Yeah.
Okay, but it will be revised, right? Because I remember we gave some feedback
Yes.
about the questions. Okay, great. Thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah, we are working on that now and that'll go up on his entity page.
Okay.
For starters? Okay, I'll start because I usually don't come into budget season with a number in mind because I think that it very much depends on what we think our needs are. This year, I'd probably be shooting for, to come in around the rate of inflation. A couple of considerations for me are, one, it would be very helpful to have a presentation from the manager and other department heads about, of the impact of the cuts we made last year. Because as you probably remember, I did not think, I thought we cut too much. I did not think they were a good idea. And I think ever since then, we've seen. And I think ever since then, we've seen the impact of those, those cuts. So I'd like to uh, at least have a look at what the, what the real life impact is and whether we want to continue on the basis of the uh, the cuts that we made or start to restore some of the positions that, that were cut. I know that uh, there's always the slogan of do more with less and it's a nice slogan. Most of the time, I don't think it's really possible. So uh, so that's one key uh, opening observation for me. Another is that we've heard for years, well, we should get the budget to where it's not wants, it's just needs. It's not, uh, it's not, uh, we don't want to have anything in the budget that's there just because it's nice to have. And I think it's clear, there's nothing in the budget that's just because it's nice to have. I think it's all there be, uh, because it's stuff that, that our community needs. And so I'm, my opening position is that I don't support cut, cutting any of our services or staff to uh, to get where we need to go. And if that means we need to, need to raise, raise taxes, then that's what we need to do.
Uh, great. Uh, we can definitely come to you with a presentation about the impact of cuts. I do want to be a little bit honest about that one and, and Kelly, please don't yell at me. Um, you know, we are here today and the community hasn't seen a huge impact related to these cuts because we as the leadership team under Kelly's guidance have been going at a breakneck pace because we believe in this community and we want to do the things to make it better. Um, but that, that breakneck pace is not sustainable. I put in twelve hours this weekend working to get these items to you and to work on the budget. And at some point, you know, we will all crash and that point is coming. And I just, I shouldn't be so transparent, but I am because I believe in here and it's place and the difference we can make. Um, but it is incredibly difficult right now and our staff is feeling that. But we've all rallied around Kelly and each other because we believe in the city and our staff is showing that too. You know, my staff is putting in more time and none of them get overtime, but the job has to get done and we've been down a person. And that's the same across all departments. And so I just felt like you should know that as we go into this build, as we are spread extremely thin and doing our best, we are running out of steam. Um, I'm running out of steam.
So.
Uh, thank you for that, Sarah. I, I really appreciate that. And of course, you know, I perk up when I hear overtime. I recall, um, we talked not too long ago about some analysis of overtime that, that maybe there was a way to um, hire to offset overtime and take pressure off people. Uh, will we have that analysis?
Yep, I, I'm meeting on Friday with Kelly and Derek to talk about the fire department and try to figure out, you know, what their shifts look like and how I can math my way into maybe a couple of additional employees to reduce overtime. I don't think you'll have a one-to-one, but you'll have to consider, you know, what level of service you're looking to provide.
Yeah, I hope it'd be very helpful to have that. I'm glad you're, you'll get it to us. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Carrie.
Uh, thank you so much. Um, thank you also particularly for talking about the, addressing the question of impact of, on services of reduced staffing. And I, what I hear you saying is that services haven't necessarily been impacted very much because staff is working extra, working on the weekends, really killing themselves to make sure that the services are still being delivered. And I'm a little worried that that's kind of what we were counting on all along, you know, we'll make these cuts, but staff will just somehow make it work. And I just want to recognize that that is not sustainable, that it's not, maybe just not sustainable. It's not a good way to conduct business. People should be able to get their jobs done in forty hours a week. And if they can't, then it means we need to relook at how we're structuring things. So I, I hope that if, that we will talk concretely about services and recognize that we may, if we keep the same staffing levels we have now, we are going to have to cut back on some services and we should really look at that very concretely. Um, and I also want to say that I, I am not, I, I don't, I'm not thrilled with setting, picking a percentage that we want to go up and aiming to that because what happens when we do that, when we have a number? Everything just kind of goes to that end goal instead of talking about what do we actually need? And what's happening in the finance department and is it sustainable? So, so I think that, you know, having a, a general sense that inflation is a pretty good guideline to, to go by. But if it needs to be higher than that, I am not going to be opposed to that. If it's, you know, twenty-five percent, then I'm opposed to that, right?
But I will not bring you that, I promise.
I know you want, so that, so I'm, so I'd rather not, you know, pick a hard number at this point, but instead try to focus on um, all the other, all the things that we need. And the questions that you've asked us, I also really appreciate these very specific questions that you've asked us. And I'm definitely going to be seeing if I can get some feedback from members of the public to answer these exact questions too.
Yeah, and if you could get those and, you know, share them with Kelly and I in an email as soon as you've got that feedback compiled, that'll help as, you know, we're getting up in this compressed time window between now and the budget presentation. And I want to make sure, you know, we've got all the factors and we give you the best budget we can.
Thank you.
Um, I'm just trying to think how to form my thoughts here. So I'll just say, you know, for me, one of my strong values is work-life balance. And I think working on the weekends is, like I, I'd like to ask, I mean, this is not trying to phrase this in a way to like dig deep, to give us information, right? So when I ask my staff at work, I'm like, well, why? Like, why are you working on the weekends? Like, what are you working on? Like, what, what were some of the circumstances that made you work sixty hours a week, right? Like, really trying to get that picture of where are you spending your time? And I think also, more importantly, like where are you not spending your time? That you want to focus your time and energy because I feel like there's always gaps and opportunities in our work. And so I'd really love to understand, um, I don't know how we do this. I'm just kind of talking out loud, but like, and there's always like an analysis of like, you know, are you spending most of your time on, you know, public, you know, requests or like what is that big bucket of work that our staff are spending their time on? And if they weren't spending their time on that, like where could they spend their time on? And so I feel like there needs to be some analysis done there because I don't think just, I mean, in my line of work, just putting people in positions and adding more staff doesn't solve the problem. Maybe it would, but I think we do need to have an analysis of where the time is being spent. And maybe there's solutions to like, make that time, you know, more efficient. And I know Kelly's been working, you know, with the staff and looking at, you know, small continuous improvement projects. And I think that's part of the culture that's being weaved into this fabric. But that doesn't happen overnight. Like, that is a, like, not a, yes, everything's going to be fixed tomorrow. But um, I don't know, I feel like just looking at the work, the responsibility and where can we free up some of that time? You know, maybe there's a policy or something that we could look at so that you can focus on what matters most, so you're not working sixty hours a week. I think it's like a gaps, opportunity, um, kind of current state analysis because I agree, it's not sustainable. I would not want to work, well, I mean, we all work, but for paid jobs, you should not be working twelve hours on the weekend preparing these reports. And I agree that is not sustainable and I would not ever want to ask my staff to do that. So I just, I don't know.
Especially clear, nobody asked me to do it.
I know, but you did it because you wanted to do it.
Well, no, I didn't want to do it. I did it because I had to do it. But some of it here, you know, we, we are a small city um, with big dreams. And so, you know, we are doing a ton here punching way outside of our weight class uh, as far as the city of Montpelier is concerned. And I think that all of those things are great things and they drive us into the future and they build progress and projects. But it's a sheer volume issue. Um, and, and that's my opinion, but it, it is. So we, you know, do big things here, but we have a, a city of eight thousand uh, that hasn't grown. And we need to bolster the grand list. That's important. We need to improve our water lines and do our paving. I can't tell you what we shouldn't do. Um, but I don't know how to tell you how we can do it better with the staff we have without putting that extra time in. It just, or it doesn't get done. And when it doesn't get done, then you run bigger risks.
Evelyn.
Thank you. So, because you mentioned local option sale tax and um, I remember that a couple of the business owners were uh, in one of our meetings and they wanna see some of that money.
Want to pop that for the next item? I have that in the next item.
Yeah, yeah. So um, I will just make a general, actually not a comment, but I will share a data with all of you. So there's a twenty twenty-five business climate survey report just published. I'm reading the question. Do you believe the business community's voice is heard in Montpelier? Fifty-three point three, no. Twenty percent unsure. Yes, twenty-six point seven. So what did we do wrong? And what we can do better this time? And it's a general comment, but because we are talking budget and local auction sale tax, everything is like interrelated. Let's make this no to yes, right? It's, it's, it's a very big data and if you, I can send the link to you if you go and read the whole report. And let's include them more um, during this budget process in addition to public survey and everything. Uh, because in the end, businesses are the biggest group uh, who are affected with our budget decisions.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, as part of the sales tax conversation next, um, there is contemplation for funding um, for the downtown community. And so I think that, you know, that's an important discussion point. I do also think, you know, we are trying to be incredibly collaborative and transparent and we want to meet everyone where they're at and, and the business community is included. So if it would be helpful to attend meetings or to help, you know, speak to them more. I know Evelyn goes already, but if there are, you know, finance questions, I'm happy to attend to, you know.
Yeah, Ben.
Yeah, um, I really appreciate that uh, and the work you all put in. You know, I think you really kind of hit it on the head when you said like, we're a city of eight thousand, right? And the reality is, I think we need to be a city of ten thousand.
At least, yeah.
You know, and so when we think about that and we think about budgeting, it's really about like, I think about budgeting is like, what are the investments that we need to make? And, you know, when we talk about economic development, that is not measured in a budget cycle. That is measured in a decade, right? And so I also think about like, we've identified priorities that we say that we care about and it's like, show me your budget and I'll show you your values, right? And so when I see things like housing is one of our number one priorities, but we haven't funded the housing trust fund in years, right? Or, you know, infrastructure is super important to us, but we weren't ready to go to the steady state funding, right? Uh, you know, um, economic development is really important to us. Are we funding Montpelier Alive adequately? Do we have, you know, um, do we have programs that are actually helpful to small businesses in our downtown? Um, so I just think there are, are a number of things that as we approach this, I too um, really, I mean, honestly, I watched the last year's budget cycle and it was, I think that what I found frustrating is like, doing it all by percentage felt arbitrary. And I, I think like, yeah, inflation is a good like starting point of just in general kind of thing. But I think we really need to think about not percentages, but programs, right? And what, what are the investments that are going to pay back? Like every year I read something like, oh, this year we're going to work to increase the um, the user base for the district team. How? Right? What are we doing to make that happen? And so I think like, making those kinds of investments in outreach to grow the, you know, just what are those things that um, have return on investment? And I think that that's really important to consider as we budget.
Thanks, Ben. Any more observations for anyone on the council? We have a bit of time for public comment if anyone wants to be here. On the uh, general topic of budget targets for two thousand twenty-seven.
Yeah, I'm, I'm troubled, Steve Whitaker, I'm troubled that we're talking about raising the taxes again. It's you, lots of Montpelierites have to work forty, sixty hours, you know? It's not, most of these folks are all making a hundred, hundred fifty thousand dollars a year on city staff. It's not like they're working for us. It's like we're working for them to give them gold-plated benefits packages and retirement packages and new trucks and et cetera. So we really have to think about lowering our taxes and/or making some cuts, finding where the fat is or where the unproductive employees are and find a way to, you can't just keep adding to this budget and because you're taking it out of somebody else's food budget or heat budget, or if they can't afford those, their landlord is raising the rent and pushing people out of their homes. So you, you are not looking at this thing realistically when you just keep thinking we can just keep adding every year. I mean, people are really stressed and most of the people that are stressed are not making a hundred, hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. So y'all need to get real about finding, we, we may not need a communications director. We may not need both a city manager and an assistant city manager. We, we have to be realistic about how many of these hundred seventy-seven people making over a hundred thousand dollars out of a employee roster of a hundred and fourteen or something like that? That's, no other city has, everybody's aghast at that, that, that learns about our numbers. So we have, under Frazier, we have fattened it up and built a loyalty because everybody's really well-paid. But now you have no way to audit who's productive and they, everybody will say the whole thing's going to collapse if you cut our pay or if you cut our staff. They're looking out for each other, not us.
Uh, so I'd just like to speak to the comment about the staff pay. Uh, I uh, quite honestly think that that's grossly inaccurate without looking at it to tell you that, but we have a staff of like a hundred and, and ten, maybe. There's no way seventy-seven make over a hundred thousand dollars. Just is not how that works.
I know, the number is, I'm doing.
It's just to, you know, tamp down the rhetoric here a little bit. Um, you know, I, I think the intent of this conversation is to talk about, you know, our budget and what's possible. Um, and I, you know, also do take issue with the assertion that, you know, staff is overpaid or we need to cut the fat or, you know, it's a couple of the positions that you referenced are within the city manager's office. And while it may seem like those positions are not needed, they are sorely needed. And actually, you know, one of the things that I just, and we'll bring back some more details that you have a little bit more to work with, I think, in the way that you make your decisions. Um, because we, we're working really hard this year to make sure that we can support the decisions and go together on the budget. Um, and so I hope that that's clear. And, you know, I also, um, one of the things is, you know, we are in a spot where we will always show up. We are committed to the city and I think our staff has demonstrated that time and again. And I do want to highlight just briefly, you know, some of the things that, you know, right now, based on our staffing level within the city manager's office, we're not fully doing. So for instance, Evelyn is a fantastic communications director. That is her passion. That is where, when you talk about the things that she should be doing, that's what she should be doing. And I think people want that transparency, you know? Um, and with our current structure, she has stepped into the void and is dealing with, you know, committees and public records requests and, you know, all kinds of things that are, you know, municipal operations that have to get done, you know, at the risk of not doing the communications pieces, which is what we sorely need and also is what she is passionate about. Um, so that's one example. Another example is our sustainable, sustainability director. So while that position was brought on to focus on net zero, which we are still committed to, that person right now is the reason that one of the homes is getting elevated on time. And so I just want to highlight that because, you know, we're showing up and it's for, whether it's one resident or all the residents, we're here. And so I just want to, you know, it's a little bit impassioned and I, you know, I'm just taking a page from Sarah's book. She's inspired me and I think, you know, maybe we're not fully, you know, telling the story and we're going to do that. And I hope that, you know, we can kind of have a good conversation about what needs to happen next because, you know, it's not fluff. The reality is, is the level of service that you would like and what we want to provide, we want to say yes. We want to do everything all at once and we can't do that um, because we are, you know, getting to a point of breaking. And then the last person that I'll mention within the city manager's office is our human resources director. And she is not necessarily always fully doing the human services stuff that she should be doing um, to help us support our staff, whether that's onboarding, whether to help us support our staff, whether that's onboarding, whether that is reviewing job descriptions, whether that's making sure that people have the support that they need to do their work. She's great. You know, she takes those tough questions day in and day out. And so I just, you know, the rhetoric around over a hundred thousand dollars. So I'd just like to call for just a second, you know, the comment about that being too much. That's your opinion. That is what the market bears for these positions. So I want everybody to think about that, too. Because, you know, we don't just offer, you know, these cushy jobs. You know, they are actually grounded in what the market will allow for, and we can back that up with details through Vermont League of Cities and Towns, through other communities, just to show that, you know, we're not beyond range, you know? And I think the other thing and the last thing I'll say, and I'll step away from this for a moment, it's just that, you know, we do want to focus on cost improvement. That's actually something that I'm really passionate about and I can't fully engage in the way that I would like to. Because it's impactful work, it's meaningful work, it's so that we can do, you know, the work that we want to do and also make things better. Because that's why we're all here, is to make things better. So thank you for the opportunity to comment and thank you, Steve, for your comments, because it just gives us the opportunity to highlight the work that we're doing. And then I also don't want to miss the opportunity to recognize the other departments. Finance, you know, they've been troopers. They've been down too, you know, and Sarah is amazing and her team is amazing. And I know because I've worked with all of them very closely. And then DPW, like, day in and day out, you know? And then when you look at, you know, public safety, and I really did promise I would stop, but I just couldn't. I got out of there. You know, whether it's our police or our fire departments, like when you need them, they're there. And so, you know, in past budgets, we have also focused on public safety because, you know, it's it's important, it's core to the municipal services that we provide. But on the administrative side of the house and don't want to forget planning, like, without a good plan, we can't get there. You know, and so, you know, Mike and his team are working to that end, too. And so I just, I want to be able to support the big dreams. But I also feel like we're in a spot where we have to also deal in reality and we'll do that.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you.
Adrian.
So thank you, Kelly. Those are very good examples. And that's what I was sort of alluding to before, but not as precise as you. But so I think one really good example that you shared was Evelyn. Hi, Evelyn. So you are the communications director, right? So you have a job description and this is what is your passion? Like you, communications makes you super happy. But as Kelly said, you do like, I don't know, thirty other things that are not part of your job. Like, I would love to know what those are. Same with HR, finance, DPW, like what is outside of their job descriptions that they're doing? Because in my mind, like, is that like another position potentially that could umbrella some of this extra work? Because we want Evelyn to work on communications. Like, we know the public wants transparency, they want consistent communication, they want clear communication. But I feel like we sacrifice that because she's doing FOIA request. She's now supporting our, I don't know, twenty, thirty committees, which I know is a nightmare. I've seen the process, I've seen the flow chart. And so I feel like those are the conversations I want to have, but then also tying it back to our three priorities. Right? So what are we not focusing on with housing, infrastructure, economic development? Because each staff person in the city is doing their job, but like thirty other things. So like, what could we take off their plate? What does it look like strategically to kind of, you know, keep the work going? You know, if there might be like another position, but then like what Ben said, how do we reinvest in these structures and these entities that align with our priorities? Like, that's what I'm interested in because, you know, we want infrastructure, we want housing and, you know, what are those mechanisms that we have to invest in to move our priorities forward? Like, I just don't think we do a good job of, we haven't done a good job of doing that. So I think this is the opportunity to to make that happen.
Helen, oh, sorry. Go ahead, Kelly. If you were responding directly to Adrian.
Something that was in the staffing assessment, which speaks to what you were saying a little bit, that, you know, this idea of pooling positions. You know, I mean, across, like the same type of classification across departments. We are very fortunate to have a team that works really well together, but if we were able to sort of be at some administrative capacity, for example, just wanted to highlight that.
Thanks. Go ahead, Helen.
I just want to say, welcome to budget season. It's deja vu. This is my fourth budget cycle and we haven't even seen the budget, but we already start talking. So most of the time it is fun because I've learned a lot about finance and budgeting. So I agree all the things we just mentioned. Everybody has a good point. But also median household income in Montpelier, seventy thousand dollars, hundred seventy-five. Individual income, forty-seven thousand, sixty-one. And I am one of them. So when we talk about program services, it is great. Yeah, I want to live in Montpelier. But also I want to live in an affordable Montpelier. So let's create a balance. I think we can create a balance like I don't want to unmotivate city staff, but I want people like me continue living in Montpelier because it is important to me, to my kids, my family. So let's create balance. And all this like smart people in this room, we can do it together. So I just want to highlight that, too. All the people who are affected with this budget and services, they are also struggling with the SNAP benefits with all the things happening, federal level and national level, losing their job, they cannot find another job. So let's think about our community as a whole. Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. Well, Sarah, I don't think you got a number from anybody, but.
I think CPI, not CPI, Strategic Plan and Programs. I, you know, I, I want to do all of the things, too. But absent what you don't want to do, what do you want to do most? You know, I think when we talk about the sales tax in the next conversation, I think you have opportunity in the FY twenty-seven budget to potentially allocate a big chunk to the infrastructure and then maybe another chunk to housing and another chunk to the downtown and and another chunk to economic development. Previously, economic development was funded at about a hundred thousand and the housing trust was at about a hundred and fifty. I think with strategic utilization of the sales tax, based on your recommendation, we could build those back into our base budget using this new source of revenue. So I think that's important to talk about and that, you know, allows us to get to steady state with paving and sidewalks in this year and not in FY thirty-one. And it allows us to start putting funding back for economic development and housing. And if we do do those things, we're ticking off on your strategic plan and we're making real movement. You know, it's tough with that number being unknown because they only have one quarter, but it is definitely favorable and I, you know, could be utilized to hit your marks for a strategic plan and and move it ahead.
Ben.
Yeah, and I would just say, too, thinking about the variability of the local auction tax, I mean, we'll see, right? Over the long term, how much variability there really is. But, you know, even just like tying some of those things to percentages, right, of like whatever it ends up, you know, we'll budget for it, obviously, but like set it at a percentage level so that you know, that we really kind of stay true to those things that we've identified as priorities. And, you know, and I just really appreciate, Helen, what you're talking about, about the, you know, just the affordability component to it. But we can't have affordability in the city. The way to get to long-term affordability in the city is to build more housing. Right? And 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 to have the kind of infrastructure that doesn't pass on costs that we don't see to to homeowners. And so I just think like, I think we're, you know, we all have these kinds of priorities and that's why we we chose them. Because ultimately, what we're trying to get to is a place where we have an economically diverse community, but people can afford to.
Can I add something? Because Ben mentioned my name. So we have to make a decision. Okay, Stowe? They say we are a rich town. We only accept people who are rich, right? They don't say it like, but with the tax rate, house, everything. We can't say that, okay, Montpelier wants to be a, something like Stowe. I'm okay. Or we are, we should, we are saying already, we should continue saying that Montpelier is an affordable city. Then we should make our decision based on that. So my concern is if we are saying we are an affordable town, then we should show this in our budget, too. If we change our motto, then I'm okay with it, too. So if we want to be like Stowe or others, rich town, fine, I'm okay with that, too. I want to say, we just started talking about health, insurance and benefit, how we can do it. So this year, my workplace changed its structure. And they used to pay hundred percent. Now they make it twenty, twenty percent we are paying and eighty percent they are paying. They told us it is unsustainable for us to pay hundred percent of the benefits. So now I am paying twenty percent of my benefits. And I don't know how it will work in the long run for me, but because we've already started this discussion last year, I just want to bring up this issue. If we can talk about this or it's out of the question, both answers are okay.
City staff is already contributing. If you have a family plan, you're contributing twenty percent already to that plan. It is less if you're a single or a two-person, but that is to, you know, hopefully entice people to take single and two-person plans to save money. So there is already a equitable cost share to similar municipalities, if not less favorable here than in others.
Yeah. Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
First of all, I want to comment that it's largely a myth that you can build yourself out of a tax problem. Take a look at our past. Go back many years and look at the building we did. It never lowered the tax taxes. In fact, they've increased. Because unless you want to build multimillion-dollar homes and bring in multimillionaires to live in them, you're not going to lower your taxes. Because all the homes are going to raise services and a lot of the things you need and it offsets them. So do your research. It's a myth that you can build yourself out of a tax problem. It will help the water sewer, there's no question about it. It might give more people in the schools, it might give more shopping downtown. But it's a myth. So here, and the other thing I want to comment on is the average city employee makes more than the average person working in Montpelier. Not only do they make more, they have far better benefits. So maybe we ought to talk about a couple of things. Maybe if they're overworked and we need more help, maybe we ought to take a percentage of everybody's pay and put it to the new positions. Maybe we ought to actually get rid of some of the things we offer. Do we really need to offer life insurance to everybody? Most people buy that on their own. So, I mean, you look at the benefits and they're just way better than the average person. Are they willing to say, yeah, let's drop some benefits so we can get more help? Or do we just hire more help with higher salaries and everything? You're, but you know, all you're going to do is what Palin says, create a rich little gated city that you're either going to have the rich and the heavily subsidized, but you're going to have no middle. Because, and that's the kind of housing you're going to build. So who's going to buy it? Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. I think you should move to the next item, agenda item. I don't think you're going to get any more.
I felt that and we're bumping up on my sixty-five minutes already, I think. So no, thank you. This has been helpful and it's been a good conversation. And I appreciate that you heard us and and everything. So thank you. Sorry for getting personal.
Next up, local option tax.
Yes. So same thing here. I've got a fun, quick talking point. This is to provide the update on the local option sales tax or LOT and how it could be allocated in twenty-six and planned for in twenty-seven. We received our first lot payment for the quarter one, July to September of two thousand twenty-five. The city received two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars of the total four hundred and twenty-four thousand that was collected by the state. And I'll be honest, that far exceeded my projections. And so I didn't believe it. Somebody missed a decimal place, right? I went back and I pulled the state data and I recalculated and I still couldn't get there. And so then I called the state. And they did confirm that the data that is available online to math into this is brick and mortar retail stores. It does not include the e-commerce. And so our projections were definitely low based on some of that not complete data set that was available. And so it is super positive that we're looking at these numbers now. And so, you know, I, it looks like based on what we've received this time around, definitely more than fifty percent comes from brick and mortar stores in the downtown and in Montpelier. But a significant portion comes from online sales. And so I think what we got in this quarter for about two seventy, likely in this next holiday quarter with lots of online shopping would be more favorable. I like to estimate conservatively, so I'm going to say we get roughly this for four quarters, call it a million dollars. Could be better. And if it's better, maybe we let that go to fund balance and help build towards our target policy. And so things to think about, right? So some background, the voters approved this in March. The state collects the full seven percent sales tax and then the one percent local option, or excuse me, portion minus the fees comes to the city quarterly. Thirty percent of that, as you could see, the four twenty-four that was collected, but we only received two seventy. So seventy percent goes to us and thirty to the state pilot fund. When I was speaking to the woman from the Department of Taxes, she also said that effective October first, our share increases to seventy-five percent instead of just the seventy percent, which is also more favorable for us and and this tax. And so also exciting news. So financial context, FY twenty-five and twenty-six are incredibly, were incredibly and are incredibly tight budgets with limited capacity for new spending. The local option tax provides a revenue source to address deferred capital needs, strengthen our general fund towards our fifteen percent target balance and support the downtown. For an FY twenty-six allocation, on the article, we voted and the voters voted to allocate a hundred thousand to infrastructure and fifty thousand to Montpelier Alive. A recommendation for the remaining use of the FY twenty-six funds that aren't budgeted and are coming in and not to be used until we have received them would be first to put back into fund balance, the city manager's severance pay. That way we can put that back and start building that reserve. We only have somewhere between four and six percent and we should have fifteen. And that makes day-to-day challenging, let alone floating big projects. And so, you know, growth of fund balance and having that cash on hand is incredibly important. We also have significant deferred equipment. And so a couple of items that have been deferred for many years and are putting significant pressure on the capital budget are a new ambulance and a DPW truck, plow truck number four specifically. And if you are interested or willing or, you know, like this recommendation, those are our two pieces of equipment that once we receive those funds, we could use and take off pressure from the twenty-seven budget where these two pieces are currently sitting. And then there should be excess ambulance revenue in FY twenty-five. And so some of that, once we get towards the end of the year, when we would actually be looking at purchasing an ambulance, right? It won't be in twenty-six, it would likely be in an outer year. And we would carve out this money for that is that if there is ambulance overages related to the increase in rates, and I expect there will be, some of that can go towards the ambulance and then maybe you can figure out what else you want to invest this in, or if you want to build fund balance, which would always be my recommendation. But I get there are competing needs and and holding money versus, you know, catching up is a tough decision. And so the the sum of all of those items, the Montpelier Alive article, the infrastructure article, the money back the the Montpelier Alive article, the infrastructure article, the money back to fund balance, the plow truck and the ambulance total one million twenty-three thousand, and I expect that to be within the local options tax we receive. Um that if it were me, that's where I'd put it, but it it doesn't have to be me and it's up to you all. So I just, but that's the recommendation based on the the needs we've seen. Um I think this approach ensures fiscal responsibility, it addresses critical deferred equipment, it supports Montpelier Alive and it maintains the infrastructure investment um that we've been constantly talking about. So then, as we head into FY twenty-seven, um we can incorporate the local options tax revenue conservatively into the FY twenty-seven budget. Uh I think the million dollar estimate is a good starting point um as we move in there. Um and its use could be for long-term reoccurring priorities like paving and infrastructure and equipment, strengthening the general fund fund balance, strategic initiatives for infrastructure, housing and economic development, and downtown improvements in partnership with Montpelier Alive and collaboration with the business community. For example, we could allocate five to ten percent of the local options tax to a downtown capital reserve that we work with Montpelier Alive and the business community to determine what's most important to them in the downtown. And if it's something big, then we save this money and do that something big. Or if it's something small year over year, that everybody's in alignment with council and staff and the business community. You know, we can make those improvements now. And so I think that's a great way uh to be consistent and strategic and guided and transparent with this new revenue source and making sure it doesn't get buried in the bottom line and that it is used for the things that are important to this community, which fall in your strategic plan. So with that, it's a new, meaningful new revenue stream, it strengthens our financial health and our community vitality. The twenty-six allocations recommended in here focus on urgent needs, while twenty-seven planning ensures long-term strategic use of the local option tax funds. And I think it's an approach that balances fiscal responsibility, transparency and collaboration with the community and business partners. And so with that, I'm happy to take questions or if you've got a different recommendation for these funds. Um if, if we would like to proceed.
Thanks, Sarah. Philin.
I took two finance classes in my MBA, so this year I feel stronger about this. So um to me, I wanna allocate that fifty thousand dollar to Montpelier forever, not only one time. And then I I wanna see that we are using uh rest of the money coming from local option uh sale tax for this year for infrastructure, all of them. So that's, that will be my suggestion. Thank you.
Any thoughts for any other council members? Go ahead, Carrie.
Um I'm just, I'm looking at your FY twenty-six proposal for what to do with money. So it's fifty thousand to Montpelier Alive, a hundred thousand to infrastructure, replenishing our fund balance, and then two capital expenditures.
Correct.
Which um for me kind of fall under the the general infrastructure umbrella.
Yes.
Um so I feel, so I feel like that aligns with the priorities that we established early on for what this money would be spent on this year. So I like that one. I'm in favor of that.
Me too.
That's helpful.
Yeah, I mean, the the what you'd outlined and we kinda talked about in the CIP meeting earlier, right? Get this to the steady state that we've been talking about for years.
Yes, if we, if the ambulance and the plow truck are left in the budget, it, we'll have some, a bigger conversation to have when it comes to infrastructure and steady state and the like, because these two items are putting significant pressure on the capital budget. With this one-time money that we have this opportunity to play a bit of catch-up, we'll stop. You know, the ambulance that we have isn't in great shape right now and we're putting way more money into these pieces of equipment than we would if we had gotten rid of them at the end of what we deemed their useful life with a trade value. And so it's critical that we catch up so that we don't keep putting, you know, good money after bad and that, you know, we can move ahead.
Good, go ahead.
Sorry, just like, but that's a really good example of that, like the ambulance, the longer we put it off, the less trade-in value we get, plus like we now have a surplus in the budget from ambulance service.
Correct.
Like, so that is something that is like generating revenue and.
I'm hopeful that the overages related to ambulance revenue can offset some of this ambulance costs and free up some of that local options tax, so that we can talk about it again. Yeah.
Sarah, one question about the uh about the ambulance. I know we just uh six months ago approved the bond for the new tower truck. And we know that we're not gonna have to spend any money on it for a couple of years. Does it work kinda the same way with an ambulance? Does it, do you have to order a year or so or more in advance to get that?
Uh so my understanding is that there is one being built for us now, uh but that we are not committed to. So if we don't get it, we will be three years out from a new ambulance. If we do take it, then and we have these funds available to pay for it, then we'll be right in line where we need to be now. Uh if we don't want it, he'll turn around and sell it to somebody else within a couple of days. So we're not committed, but you know, we do, there is one that would work for us in the works now that we could potentially take delivery of in twenty-seven.
Oh, I I definitely think we should do that, yeah. And and really, um you know, I I agree with your your idea. I think that uh after the two things that we already got the voters to say they wanted us to do, um absolutely, we need to uh replenish the uh the hole that the severance payment, payment uh created in our uh in our fund balance. I think that just has to be filled up again. So.
Thanks, Jack. Um I I like your suggestions. I think they make sense uh for fiscal twenty-six. What I worry about for fiscal twenty-seven is that we we kinda promised that the town a uh a process. Um and this can't be it. I mean, we we need, we need input and um so I I just wonder when, you know, when do we develop that? When, when do we communicate that to the to the city? Uh I mean, the business community especially is um is watching this process. And I think it's understandable in in fiscal twenty-six. It's, we we're really uh guessing at the amount we're hopeful, but we don't know how much it's gonna be. And so um it makes sense to make these decisions, um which which make good sense now. But going forward, there are longer-term projects that I think some of this, some of this funding ought to be dedicated into a sort of a revolving fund that that goes to specific projects uh as they come up. Um so I mean, I, we we need to come up with a a plan for that, I think, and time, timing for that.
Yeah, I I think we can um issue questions in the budget survey that are related to local options tax and we can appetite that. I'm also happy to go, you know, directed talking points and I had Evelyn share them with the business um community from a meeting or two ago and I'm happy to go speak to them. You know, part of, one of the things I contemplated in the um FY twenty-seven use was allocating a percentage. So if we get, you know, a million or more and you all decide that it's five or ten percent, right? Ten percent of a million, they're gonna get a hundred thousand dollars to put towards the downtown or to Montpelier Alive or whatever that looks like. If it, if it comes in higher than that and you've allocated ten percent, then it would be more, right? So I think, you know, we wanna engage everyone about what's important um and not, and then once we've done that, we should make a policy about the sales tax. We're not ready yet to do that because we don't know, but we should make a policy about what that's going to be used for, to protect it moving forward and to be sure it's for infrastructure or the downtown or housing or economic development, whatever the priorities are. Uh we wanna uh protect that and then continue those investments as we move ahead.
Yeah, I think that, I think that's important to to ultimately come up with a policy that um that is as specific as we can possibly make it, but allows for flexibility, you know, over time as as things come up.
You don't, you don't get a revenue source like this often, right? This is the the last big revenue source. We're kinda hanging out in town and and so it it's a fantastic opportunity and we wanna make sure we use it well.
Uh I just, I just had a question about, it sounded like the the um percentage is gonna change next year to seventy-five, twenty-five?
Uh it actually is August, or August, yeah, October first.
Oh, it's changing already. And the filing, the fees seem to be unusually large, uh twenty-seven thousand dollars in fees for one quarter?
Fortunately, there's no way for me to math back into that. Because if you take the number of returns filed by the return fee, it does not equal what we were charged. It would be much larger if it did, which is why I'm hesitant to ask. But I imagine that the returns that are listed there, based on the quantity of them, I think it probably is hard for them to quantify or break out Montpelier specific because all of these online filers are filing, you know, like an Amazon, ships to me in Williamstown and you in Montpelier, right? So they've got one filing with umpteen one percent municipalities. I think it's hard to math into that number, but I wasn't gonna ask in case it was more.
Yeah, I did, I divided the seven thousand and and it's about four bucks of.
Yeah, and it notes, I think the, yeah, and it notes that the filing fee is like five ninety or five ninety-six or something and so.
Yeah, I mean, why can't AI do that for, you know, pennies?
Right.
Anyway, it seems like it, it'll be, it's, it's a very, it seems like a very high fee, that's all.
I think you addressed last week, but I would also just like, and you put it in your memo that like, we should really support ELCT, right, in terms of their advocacy?
Yeah.
Or if the pilot's fully funded, worth losing, like, you know, um and specifically, and you know, whether this is tied long-term, sound kinda what you're talking about a fund, but like, I think when we think about how much our business has suffered because of the flood, right? Like, what is the investment that we're making that um helps protect them for the next one, right? And maybe it's a revolving loan fund, zero percent interest to like help building owners do flood mitigation the best that they can. But like, there's no ready source of capital for that right now and I think it's really important. Again, I would love to see when there's a natural disaster declared that the state just automatically allocate the full local option tax provided that extra percentage is used for um flood mitigation or recovery.
Um another question that occurs to me, and this is more of a two thousand twenty-seven question than a than a sales tax question. But that is, you know, we all get a lot of emails from people saying we need to do more paving. And and I think last year, what Barry did was Barry put a separate article on their ballot to say, let's put, spend a million dollars on uh on paving. And on top of everything else, because I think paving is so important, paving is very important and I wanna increase the amount we pave, but I do not think there's a, there's fat in the budget that we can cut to uh to get to where we need to be for paving. So I don't wanna have that paving coming out of other parts of the ballot. So if budget, so if everybody tells us they want us to spend money on paving. So let's give them a chance to spend their money on paving by putting five hundred thousand or something, whatever it takes to get us up a little bit above the steady state figure, because the steady state figure is not gonna be one point two million dollars forever, right?
Yeah, no, I, you know, we've been talking about what that inflator looks like um in the out years and, you know, it will continue to grow with rising costs, right? Um but once we get caught up and are at, you know, a CPI, excuse me, PCI, not CPI, PCI that is adequate um for the council, you know, we we will level out aside from inflationary cost increases or um abnormal um additional projects. I think that I would caution about the valid item and maybe wait until we talk about the, get the city manager's presentation. Uh you know, coming out of the CIP committee meeting that we had before this, um both Ben and Carrie supported a plan that involved one point two million in paving in this year. And so I don't know that we can do paving in excess of that. Um but if we can figure out how to get that one point two in the budget before having to make it a separate valid item, I'd like to give that a try. But if we can't, then absolutely, if that's what the council desires, it it could be a valid item.
Yeah, there's a couple of issues and one of them is can we get in the uh budget? And without doing that, another is, does uh DBW have the capacity to absorb that that amount of money and put it to practical use, knowing the problems they've had with keeping an engineer and and all the other stuff, so.
Set the one point two above that, I think, would be tricky.
Yep.
Actually, the CIP is great, right? Like, there's a five-year plan, all the streets, one point, like, it's really good and um.
I know what they're gonna do with it.
Yeah, and and also just, I mean, right, back up on this, like, that if they can count on the one point two, it allows them to do some of these bigger projects that they have to put off. You know, just because it, you know, it takes, when it's a six hundred thousand dollar project and you've got an eight hundred thousand dollar budget, you're really limited to what the other stuff you can do. And this is an appropriate scale, it sounded like, that allows them to do some really good work in a five-year plan that'll get us to the um PCI that, you know, just, I don't know, it was really good.
For all you people out in Zoom land, PCI is pavement condition index. Uh I see a member of the public, Lauren, you've had your hand raised for a while.
Okay, sorry, it took me a minute to unmute. Um can you hear me?
Yes.
So I'm, I'm Lauren Parker. I own the North Branch Cafe and I live in Montpelier. Um I have a couple of issues with um the LOT in that I've been paying LOT rooms and meals for many years and don't really know where that money goes. And I think our group, our business group, the MBA, is really focused on beautification of our downtown, a welcome center, which the state is not interested in providing, things that will bring people to Montpelier. And it um it's challenging to me to hear about so much of a portion of this going to what you call a general fund. And I hope that this will become a part of a more um generalized conversation, which includes the business community. As we collect the fees, we actually pay three point two plus percent on those collection of fees. And I don't wanna go back to our group reporting on this meeting and see that so much of the increased revenue is not being discussed with the business community at this point. I hope that you're saying that this will be still open to discussion because a lot of people who supported this against their better judgment did it because they felt the business community would be involved in making decisions about where the money is spent. Not all of it, but obviously there's a strong feeling about the fact that this money comes from the business community. Also, the online work, the money that you're getting is is unexpected, but certainly what comes from this local business community, I believe that we need to be involved in this discussion. I don't know what tonight's discussion is, whether it's designating, but I just felt the urgency to express my understanding of what our group, which we talk about every month and have since March. We are very interested in seeing where this goes. And I appreciate that we need an ambulance and I appreciate that we need a plow. But I also think that it needs to be appreciated that we have opinions that are, what's good for Montpelier as well and what's good to sustain the business community is really important. Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren. Um Elena Gustafson.
Hello, thank you. Um can you all hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Great. Um so Sarah, first of all, I just wanna thank you, you and your team for the amount of work um that you all have done. It is pretty exciting to think about what the LOT can bring to the budget and to help bring some relief. Generally, local options taxes are considered a progressive tax for cities because it does take some of that pressure off of homeowners, uh which I think for all of us, as somebody who's a, I should identify, I'm a business owner and I also live in uh here in Montpelier. Um I think, I think the one million projection is probably conservative if you keep in mind that for most retail establishments, probably thirty to forty percent of our revenue happens in the fourth quarter. Uh and twenty percent uh for me uh happens just in the month of December. So it is possible that that conservative projection is conservative and I'm hopeful that it will actually bring in more revenue. Um I would urge you, as you talk about going out to the public. I would urge you, as you talk about going out to the public and explaining, you know, asking for feedback, that you and your team come up with recommendations that people can both react to. Because the truth of it is, there are a lot of folks out there that only understand dollars in and dollars out. They don't necessarily understand what it means to invest in growth. They don't necessarily understand what it means to invest in, you know, what infrastructure can do for a city in growing that wealth. And to echo what Lauren said, because she's absolutely right, the business community, as has already been acknowledged, is quite interested in what happens with LOT. And I would urge city council to not only consider a standing allotment to Montpelier Live every year, but also a percentage that goes specifically towards the downtown. Because when you invest in the downtown, you will invest and grow the revenue of the LOT, which again, will help take some of the burden off of our homeowners. Because I do believe that it is possible for this city to be both affordable and not bestowed. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thanks, Elena. I'll just, I'll just point, Elena, I'll just point out for people who are, and Katie, I say you're on. I point out for people who may not have seen this item on the agenda, is that the recommended action is not that we make a decision tonight, but that the council establish a formal process for allocating the revenues. So this is not the, the last time you'll be hearing about this.
Maybe a decision about FY26 revenues, possibly. But definitely FY27, you know, we really need to engage everyone to talk about this. And Elena, I do agree that I think the million dollars is definitely conservative. You know, what I, from what I've seen in the downtown and, and other municipalities is that, you know, this quarter is kind of an average quarter. And then with the holidays, you will have a bigger spike in that quarter. And then you'll dip down a bit in the, the first section of the new year and then pick back up to average as you head into the summer months. I do think we could be bringing in somewhere in the 1.2 range, which, again, you'll decide what to do with once we have that extra. But because we've only seen one quarter and I asked if the data existed to look back and it doesn't, until you have elected the 1%, what's tracked specific to Montpelier doesn't exist. And to look at equitable communities, there aren't, nobody has a downtown like our downtown. Everybody's downtown is different. And so it would be hard to look at a Barry City and say, these are their trends, there probably are trends. And so I would rather, you know, come in a little low and have it trend favorably than expect we get 1.2, 1.3, get a million and have to come up with $200,000 to cut.
Katie Troutz.
I just quickly want to, well, thank everybody for considering Montpelier Live in this and in ongoing allocation of some sort, and seeing us as a resource for being able to develop programming. I liked what Ben said. Are we developing programming that will support small business? And I think Montpelier Live can work together with the business community and the council to think about that for the future. And I have some ideas. But what I wanted to say, because this discussion is about that process going forward, is I'm very eager to come up with an effective process together with council, so Montpelier Live and council and the MBA, Montpelier Business Association, for that input for the future of, of that. So I, of the LOT, so I just encourage council and city management and those involved to use Montpelier Live as a resource for that process of engagement with the business community.
Thanks, Katie. All right. So where are we?
Uh, so.
Steve, were you asking to raise your, okay.
Since you touched on ambulances and Steve Whitaker again, capital expenditures, I showed up at the Capitol meeting. They adjourned before the public comment period. Classic. You'll see, you'll see another open meeting violation too. But ambulances, signals, signs, trucks, new roads, water and sewers, civic buildings, stormwater, transit, and sidewalks, those are all capital budget items that are not, only a fraction of those are in the plan you're seeing. And when I asked one of the staff directors about where's the new road for the $5 million, $7 million road for Country Club Road, where's that in the capital budget? Well, we don't put it in the capital budget. We fund it if we get the grant. That's not the way a capital budget works. Look at 24VSA, 4430. You, we are required to have a five-year capital budget and program that has every one of the items we intend to purchase or even might hope to purchase prioritized with suggested sources of funds over that five year. And we have ignored that. I've been bringing it up repeatedly and Kelly thinks she's above the law, you know? It's fun, it's her job to keep our planning requirements, including capital budget, consistent with statute. And y'all are ignoring it. And I brought it up too many times. And that, the fact that you keep ignoring it is part of the disrespect that you're asking for. So the welcome center, we assured the feds that we were going to have a welcome center in our transit center. We reneged on that, haven't done anything since then. That was a long time ago. So we broke the deal then. That's not respectable. Public restrooms, we had half a million dollars set aside for unhoused services. It got robbed and just pissed away to everybody else, no pun intended. We built nothing in the way of public restrooms, showers or emergency shelter with that money. So I'm encouraging you to get real and get legal because you, this town thinks it's above the law. And that's just, that's not management with integrity.
Thanks, Steve.
So back to where we were. So I think where we are for 27 and the budget, I've heard you, I've heard the business community, I'll touch base with Katie and we'll get in front of them and, and hear, hear them out so we can come back to you and, and with a budget pitch that is good. Just some guidance around that, right? As we build the budget is, you know, I hear downtown, I hear infrastructure, I hear strategic plan items. And so those are the things we'll keep in mind as we build the 27 budget. And then we'll bring that back to you as part of the city manager's presentation. And in the meantime, we'll get survey questions out to, to survey the public about their priorities so we can factor that into our budget build and, you know, meet with Katie and the business community to talk about their wants and needs. And so we can all be in alignment when we come back to the budget, 27 budget pitch with you all. When it comes to 26, I don't know that I necessarily need a specific decision. However, knowing that we could allocate these funds to a plow truck and an ambulance will relieve pressure on the 27 budget as it relates to the capital improvement plan. And so I think those are, are very prudent. Again, always I'm going to be in favor of putting fund balance back, but those two pieces of equipment will give us a, a little bit of breathing room in the 27 budget to, to consider some of these other things. So maybe an action related to some of that, that I'm just not sure what, are you good with the whole? Do we want to do it in parts? What's the, that's, what's the verdict here? And then I do think that million is low. So, you know, if additional comes in, then we can talk about what to do with that as well.
First two items, obviously, the decision's already made because I was.
Those are done deal. And I, my plan is to release that 50,000 to Montpelier Live now that we've received it in the next AP warrant. So Katie, that's coming.
So folks, are we ready to make a decision on, on the other requests on the, from the administration on the capital, on the local options tax?
I will move that we approve the proposed distribution of local options tax for FY26.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Go ahead.
So that, that, that means we're going to spend it that way. I mean, it's not, I mean, fiscal 27, we're coming up with a budget which we still have to vote on, but this vote is determining how we're going to spend it.
Yes. And so we'll come back to you, like, we won't need to buy this ambulance tomorrow. We'll know what we've collected in local options tax and what we've brought in an ambulance revenue before we have to make that purchase. And so if ambulance revenue continues to trend favorably, we could use that overage to help cover some of the ambulance, free up some of the local options tax to be able to go into something else. But until we know what all of that looks like, this at least aligns us so that we can get there if those other things don't pan out.
Adrian.
So if we do go over the 1,023,175, do we want to have a discussion to allocate any additional funds for a specific reason? Like for the downtown businesses or to put that aside as part of our holistic discussion with them? Like, I don't know if that's something we want to talk about now, but I just, I want to honor what they said. I want to honor that they're, it's obviously coming from the businesses. They spend fees, they sell their services. And, you know, I just want to be like, I just want to be thoughtful about that. I just don't know what that looks like.
Kelly.
I mean, so, you know, you've come to the forecast. So, I mean, I think, you know, we would be getting authorization at this point for this plan. And I think in each of these purchases, we would be coming back to you with sort of like, yeah, we've got the funding and we can make a purchase. And so we would also be giving you a more calibrated forecast. And so I think part of some of our internal discussion has even been around if we end up with more funding, which could potentially happen because these are conservative estimates, but we just don't know yet. And so with 26, we feel like this is an opportunity to kind of take a look, take stock in what we're getting. And then, you know, I, I do also want to make sure that we are including the businesses. And so it almost, you know, we fund these things and then anything extra maybe goes into a reserve for the business community. That's how, you know, you could just sort of do that if you wanted to in this moment. Or it could be a future decision.
I'd like to be able to give you more accurate numbers, which, once we get, you know, through March, we'll have another round of payments and we'll start to feel what it looks like. And then two, once you've got that information, maybe you could make an additional allocation then, you know, once we're seeing how it's trending. But I do expect, I like to be conservative and not expect more money, but I do expect that my number is low. I just don't know.
Good.
Um, just real quick, I actually, I like that idea, right, of over a certain amount. And, and I also just want to really emphasize, right, this is 26, 27 is ideally like much more strategic. But I also would ask like Lauren and Elena and the MBA and Montpelier Live to like, really try to form consensus or specific needs that they would like to see. Like, I think that would be helpful. And I would also ask like the planning, the planning department, right? Doing the economic development work of like, what are the, you know, how could that, if we have money in a reserve fund because we've raised more than the million 23, like, how's it going to be used? Is it a revolving fund? Is it more marketing? Like, what, what exactly would they like to see? I think that would be helpful. But I'm supportive of the idea of passing this and then anything, you know, above that amount, putting in a reserve to have a conversation about how it supports the downtown.
Kelly.
So I am okay for fiscal year 26, your suggestion, my trust, your judgment. But my mind works like if I see alternative suggestions than deciding. Because when we ask, okay, this is the only thing you will decide, it makes me a little bit, I don't know what are alternatives. So maybe if you pick that, it will be better. But now I don't have any chance to do it. So it will be great in the future if we can see, okay, three different alternatives, these are the impacts, then we can all decide the best one. No, thank you.
Absolutely. You know, that's, you know, plan with 27, you know, we'll fund things. And then there will be, these are the things not funded that you have an opportunity to put in, take out, move around based on your discretion. With this 26 list, these were really like high needs. There, there weren't wants here. These, these were high needs for us. That's how they made this list, you know, not, we wanted to use that one-time unbudgeted funds the best we could.
Incorporate Adrian's suggestion, which I'm hearing, everybody is basically, sorry. No, we haven't heard many. Do you, do you have a suggestion?
I, I, I just, I, I'm not in favor of what, of making a decision now about where any excess would be, would go. I am in favor of having that larger conversation very soon about how we want to allocate our local options tax in general. So this, this plan here is like, we got to do something right now and these are high needs. But longer term, I, I like the idea of, you know, a percentage goes to Montpelier Live or some, or to a percentage goes into the business community somehow. I don't know what that means. And I appreciate Ben's asking for some specifics about what do you mean? So I want to, I would want to hear that first. So I'm comfortable tonight with just saying, let's just spend it this way. If there's more than that, then we will talk about it then. But also to have that larger conversation sooner rather than later about how we want to spend that money.
Absolutely.
Everybody, are we ready to vote? The motion is to approve the spending plan of the fiscal 2026 local options tax as proposed in, in Kelly's memo. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Jim, I realize it may take a minute for you to get unmuted and your vote in.
No, I said aye.
Okay, sorry. I didn't hear you.
Sorry about that.
Thanks. Okay.
Thank you. And I will be, you will be the first to know if extra money comes in, I promise. And thank you for bearing with me for such a long time.
Oh, great presentation. And now it's time for our 8:30 break and it's only 8:35. So we're practically right on time. practically right on time.
So these guys are gonna add what, other?
It looks like we're all back and right on time. Um, so we're up to item ten. Appointment, oh, no, is that right? Yes, it is, right. Up to item ten, appointment to the community fund board. Kelly, is this you?
Certainly uh tee it up. Um, so in your packet, um, we've got an appointment, uh, and I think we might have somebody in the audience.
Oh, awesome.
Up on us, which is great. We love when people come to see us here. So if you wanted to just maybe share a little bit about yourself and your interests, that'd be awesome.
Hi, everyone. My name's Elizabeth Malone. I moved to Montpelier just over a year ago. I've worked here for five years, not for Mark Humanities. And I've been really inspired in the last year by how much volunteerism there is. You mentioned earlier, just how many committees and boards you have. Um, there's a, there's just a lot of community involvement. And I thought about what my skill set is uh and how I might be able to be part of this community effort. Uh, Vermont Community is a, is a grant making organization, so we provide between half a million and a million dollars in grants every year. I've also served in a volunteer capacity, both with the United Way of Northwestern Vermont and a couple of the Vermont Arts Council's grant review panels. I also do grant review as part of my daily work as well. Um, so it's a skill set I'm comfortable with. I'm the direct, as the Director of Finance and Administration, my focus tends to be on things that other people don't like to focus on, which is budgets and financial reports um from organizations. And I think another piece that I bring uh is a commitment to making sure that the process is not a barrier to new projects that might be organizing new groups that might want to organize. Um, and also at the same time, not creating this expectation of continual newness. If we have organizations that are already doing fantastic work, really vital work in the community. Um, I really, really appreciate this approach to funding nonprofits through a municipal budget. Um, I actually used to work in public access television, so I had a lot of relationships with uh municipalities in Franklin County and both as a nonprofit that sought funding from a municipality and also seeing things from the municipal side of trying to manage, you know, sometimes a dozen valid items. Um, and it just, or, or taking uh, taking a, a roll call vote from the floor on town meeting day. It's just such a more meaningful and I think equitable approach to funding nonprofits that are doing work in the community. That I'd love to be part of that.
Well, great. Well, thank you for volunteering to do this. You know, I always say we, we get so much work from volunteers in our community and it really makes a big difference to, to the life of the city. Any questions from anybody? Or is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion um to appoint Elizabeth to the uh community board.
Any discussion?
I, I will just say that I've had the opportunity to work professionally with Elizabeth and it's fantastic, a great skill set uh for this board. And we're just really, really lucky to have your leadership on it.
Great, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. You're in. Thanks for doing this. Now we're up to item eleven, committee policy follow up.
Um, so I'm gonna go ahead and just start with the end in mind. So, you know, we um back in June reviewed our committee committee structure and we wanted to bring this um item back to you. Um, since that time, there's been some work on the policy. And so ideally, staff recommendation is that we would support um, a policy to govern the work that we do with committees. Um, admittedly, this policy, there were a few items that, you know, I want to highlight for your consideration. And so the goal here is really to seek your input tonight and bring it back to you at a future meeting. Um, we had discussed previously potentially putting this um back to the subcommittee, but when I got to thinking about it, I was like, you know what? I think that maybe it might be best just to put it in front of the council so that we can talk about it and then just, you know, get the policy adopted. So that's really where we're trying to go with this tonight. And so um Adrian and a few others have helped um shape this policy and have provided some comments. Um, that's in your packet. I know Sal sends some to me and I'll incorporate them in a final draft um once we have it. Um, there are a few instances that I do want to highlight um for you tonight, just so you know, some of the things that we're seeing, um, and then, you know, take any comment that you might have and just we'll bring it back um next time. So that's essentially a good process. And we did that. I also, after we go over the policy pieces, I just wanted to brief you on where we stand currently with committees in terms of numbers. We've had a little bit of movement in terms of you know, like the homelessness task force, for instance, is now a committee. Or um the uh Public Arts Commission has been reactivated. And so there were nine or so uh committees or task force that were going to hold a pending review. Um, and it seems as though we've reached resolution on the ones that we really needed to. There are some that can be done administratively, so I just wanted to highlight those that are still open. Um, and then bring back that master sheet to you for reviews, so that we can just make sure that the ones that are inactive will kind of stay that way for right now. Um, and we won't reactivate them until we decide to do so at a future date. Uh, but I just wanted to kind of put that out there. So without uh any further delay, I just wanted to put together just some quick uh items to brief you on related to the policy, just to give you some food for thought. I know you probably read the policy that's in your packet. Um, but just sort of getting into you know, what was in the cover sheet and just I just want to highlight the um intent of this policy. So the intent is to provide a clear structure and roles for staff, council ladies on same committee members. And so I think we're almost there, not quite, but we're almost there. We're getting there, pretty close. Um, a tiered classification um uh, structure for uh those that are legally required, policy based or time limited. Um, so that we get at least sort of the buckets that we can put those committees into. Um, then, you know, one of the things that Adrian brought up and has come up as part of the review that Evelyn and I have been doing with Alex Geller is um, the need for training and onboarding. And so that's kind of in this policy now where it really wasn't before. And so some thoughts on that. Um, and then reporting standards. And so I think we're gonna get clear on what that means and who's doing what and the, the um items in the policy currently up for discussion, give you some ideas of what that could look like. And so there's references to um, monthly, quarterly and annual. And so we just want to get clear on, you know, when we're doing those pieces and what the lift is associated with that reporting structure. I also think there's a component of the master sheet that could give just at a glance a summary of where we stand with those reporting. So I want to bring that back to you next time. Um, and then
I am sorry, I, I just missed the minute you just said this, but like uh, on those reporting things, you know, the quarterly reporting, the annual work plan, those kinds of things. Will you be able to bring that examples of that to us next? I'd like to see that. I'm just talking about the administrative burden.
Absolutely. And I have far comments too, to get to this point too. Um, yeah, absolutely. Um, and then there's the open meeting law pieces that we just want to make sure that we're squared away on. Um, and then the accountability measure, so um you know, if uh certain committees are not, you know, active and when they sort of are designated as inactive or when they dissolve. Um, and so some of the pieces that I just wanted to highlight for consideration that are in the existing policy right now that I would really love your input on. Um, the first part is just, um, it does offer um, some guidance in the purpose section around having the council president work with city staff directly on the committee structure. And I just wanted to see, you know, what the thoughts were on that. Um, so that, you know, we certainly can uh do that. Um, that's one piece. There's um uh, mention of sort of the monthly, quarterly, annual reporting. And one of the things I was talking to the clerk about uh this afternoon, actually, was uh around um the tier one um committees are legally required. So there are already rules and guidelines in place for those committees. So I don't know that we would have a reporting structure for them. I think that we might want to see that would be really more of those tier three committees. Um, so just a suggestion, but I think we can work that in um pretty easily. Um, also along with that in section four point four, it just uh indicates um the repository for um the um, let's see here. It indicates the repository for the orientation and training, just making sure that we are capturing that for the accountability. And I would just suggest that that would come to the manager's office right now. For instance, with the ethics policy. Um, we keep record of that. And so it just, you know, sort of is in alignment with where the committees are managed. Um, section six in the transparency section, there's a, there's an item um that I would suggest that we either modify or strike, and that's eight E, which um speaks to the website and the postings on each of those individual webpages. And the reason why I'm noting that um in particular is just that we really, we want to make sure that you get the information that we can report out, but we also want to make sure that we're aware of staff capacity to do so. And so like the committee pages themselves wouldn't be a problem in terms of, you know, making sure that some specifications there are available. Um, but the um, like the recordings, for instance, like we don't, we don't post all the recordings for all the committees. That would be a huge undertaking. And so I just want to highlight that because if that's something that you would like us to do, we'll need to make sure that we have the support for it to do that.
Can you just add a note?
If you want recordings of these meetings, please reach out to this.
Oh, yeah, we could totally do that. Yeah, there could be definitely a way to get the recording. It's just not necessarily an automatic um publishing. We just don't typically do that at this point. Um, and then the section eight just is like sort of a list of the recommendations that were in the original review that I would just like the opportunity to summarize. So that we're capturing them, but it's not a laundry list of items. And so those are the things that I just wanted to bring up for discussion purposes and that's what I had.
Adrian?
So when I was working on this policy, and I know I've talked to Alex about this, and I think he's worked with you all, I can't, I don't, I've honestly lost track of
Yep.
Of where things are. So um, like, one of the visions was, you know, I, the committees takes up so much time. Like, I saw kind of, I've, I've seen the workflow of the current state. And I think Mary uh Smith, who was here And I think Mary uh, Smith, who was here before, like this is what she did almost whole time. Like this is a huge amount of work. Um, even though we have reduced the amount of committees, it's the work, administrative work still needs to be done. And so I think in addition to this policy, like my vision of this was to ensure maybe even before we implement this policy, was to work, I work with city staff to put in some automations. I know we've done the automations for um, uh, the applications. So there's a huge workflow, right? So when someone applies to be part of a committee, that's like the beginning of this workflow. And then it goes all the way to the end of like, when they decide to leave. But that includes, you know, um, term limits. It includes, right now, we don't really have anything automated for reports or even website automations, but you could, this gets technical, but you can use like power automate to like automate all this stuff onto the website and Alex has agreed to help. So I just want to say kind of in conjunction with this policy, as staff has capacity, not during budget season, obviously, but like most of this work in this policy can be automated. And the goal is to relieve some of that administrative duty from Evelyn, so that she can obviously focus on more important things. But to say that I think committees are so critical to our city. And one of the, you know, just to have that streamlined process, the ease of applying, the ease of, you know, reporting, I think is critical to the council. Because I don't know what half these committees do. And, you know, that sucks. Right? So like, are they working on the right thing? You know, are they working in a silo where they're coming up with these amazing ideas that aren't even aligned to our strategic plan? They come to us with the presentation and we're like, oh my God, that's, that's not even what we're thinking about. So I want to value volunteer time. And I think by valuing their time as we have a process, we automate it. It's super duper clear as to why there's committee, how it's aligned to council's strategic goals. We give them the charge, they work on it, they report back to us, so we know exactly what they're doing, when they're doing it. And if they're not meeting or not meeting those goals, then, you know, we know within a month or two. It's not twelve, eighteen months down the line where we just literally wasted volunteer time. I don't, I don't want that to happen. I think this policy prevents that. And I am very clear that this is an administrative burden, but I want to make sure that we, we, we have a, you know, a process in place to automate most of this work. So.
Uh, thank you for doing all of this. Um, I, I like everything that you said, Adrian. I like um, I think if we're going to create a committee, we need to know what it's for and what we want it to do. And then we need to have some way, have some way of getting that back from them. Um, so um, I have a question about the, the tier one. I think what you said, Kelly, was that we wouldn't require reporting from those tier one, ones, ones that are legally or statutorily created. Also, we can't require training for those groups as well. So that needs to be clear. Like we can't. I think the border civil authority should have in intensive, extensive training personally, but yeah, but we can't, I, we can't, the the council can't order that. So just to clarify that, yeah. And then um, so I had a couple of like little, little things, not overall, yay, great, I love it. Little, little tiny things, something about terms. Cause different committees seem to have different terms and people are, they start them and end them at different times and you don't, it's kind of unclear. So that could be clear for every committee and be on the website. So, so you don't just have the members, but you have um, this is how, you know, what a full roster would be eleven, say, and here are the members, we have nine, and here's when their terms expire, that kind of thing. That is um, figuring that out, I know is a, is a lot of work. And I'm thinking about what you were saying, Adrian, and there, but there, you think it's easy? Okay, good. So it's easy. But maybe we could ask committee chairs to take an active role in doing some of that work instead of staff. A question keeps coming up about quorum. And whether a quorum is a majority of the number of seats on the committee or the number of people. It's the number of seats. Right? Yeah. So that should probably also be, be um, listed. And then I have some other little things, but that's, that's it. Yeah. Thank you.
Carrie, I'm sorry, Adrian.
Whoever. So I think with the terms, we've had a long conversation about this. And it's, it is complicated because every person, when they submit their application, that's when their term begin. And so it could be a two-year term or three-year term, but I think the way Alex built it, and I think it really was so critical, because is when you submit your application, that's your date of your term. And then I think he was building in automation reminders of from that date, it's like this automated process of like reminding them and the chair when that person's term is up. So we built this, well, he built this, and Evelyn and Kelly in um, a Microsoft platform. And so it's, the whole world of Microsoft is so beautiful, I'm just gonna say. And once you start building in that system, the automations are incredible. And so I'm saying that because the forms were not in Microsoft. They were on.
They're forms that are generated through the website.
Yeah, there were forms that were generated on the website that had nothing to do with any Microsoft product. So it limited the amount of automation. So I, I'm just so like positive and excited about this because now we've integrated into the Microsoft system that the automation for committees is, is just, I mean, it could revolutionize the way we do our business. So that is how I'm thinking about this. It's going to take time, it's going to take effort, because to build something and to change a process does not happen overnight as we know, because you all have to do your regular job. Um, so I would say we look at this policy, but we have a um, like a grace period, I think, as we, cause I think this is an administrative burden. To ask people to submit reports, like what is the template? How do you automate it? How do you remind it? Like, how do you manage it? Um, so I would like it to happen simultaneous somehow. So that you don't have such administrative burden, but we're building that automation as we implement the policy. Does that make sense? Does that make sense, Kelly? Like?
It does. I mean, and yes, like I used to like, I, yes, I want that too. I mean, we are a little limited in that, like, you know, right now, for instance, like with budget season and all of the things, we're not necessarily focused on this project as intensively as we were. We were meeting weekly, we had to dial it back just because I, you know, we need to be thoughtful about our time. And we also have been talking about other projects which are exciting too. Um, but uh, so I want to say, yes, there are just elements that I think we'll have to kind of phase into to get them. But I think if we have them, you know, in the policy, then there's something that we can work towards, you know. And I think that that, that's the understanding. I'm like, great, yeah. Like, I mean, you know, they will work to do that. Um, and with the automation, yeah, I mean, are already some of the things that we've been able to do with the automation and the workflows that we, you know, created are wonderful and are saving time. It's just to sort of make the time, you get to invest the time. And so we're in that investment phase and we're a little, we're on struggle street with the investment, but we want to do it. Um, and that's also a part why, like I, you know, rather than just go directly to the subcommittee, I think it's important to kind of have this conversation more globally at this level. Because it's um, it's worth it. And I want to make sure we get a policy in place that is reflective of the work that we're doing that then we can work with now and in the future.
I know, I, this one. Yeah, one thing, uh, after um, if we approve this and start uh, using it, I think it is very important to ask feedback from committees. Uh, not maybe all the members, but chairs. And then we can revise it. So I know it's a policy, but I think it should be a living document. If some parts uh, if they don't work for the committee chairs or committee members, then not to have this, just to have a policy. So.
I think it should be iterative, definitely. You know, and that, that makes sense in terms of just even that process, there will be things that will evolve. Um.
I'm going to say one, one thing, um, that maybe the wrong thing to say, but I'm just gonna say it. I think it's also important to remember as we continue in the years ahead around committees that we should really ask ourselves, what is the value of a city community? Like what does it, a committee being under the auspices of the city, what value does it add? Does it add value? And if it doesn't, is there a chance that actually being under the auspices of the city makes it, is counterproductive? Right? And so, you know, when we think about our volunteers going through all of this bureaucracy, um, for better or worse, it, it becomes kind of cumbersome. And I'll just say, like, you know, I do a lot of work with Vermont Council on Rural Development, where they go and do community visioning processes. These are the three things that we're going to work on. Let's build the task forces. They're always outside of municipal government, right? And people can do good work outside of municipal government and then bring it to the municipality and say, this is the work that we did. These are suggestions that we're making, not as a committee that you formed, but as communities that self-organize. And these are the recommendations that we have, and then we can wait them. And so I just, I really think there are committees that do have value of being in the city. I think the housing committee is a really good example, because it can really inform our policy. But I don't think it should be the de facto thing that we go to every time of like, let's form a task force or a committee. Like let's empower, like the M B A is a great example. They're not under the auspices of the city, but they can come up with recommendations and deliver them to us as a group. And I think that there's real value. Anyway, just turning it out for another piece for Claire.
Thanks.
I just want to add on what Ben said. Um, I think it's a very good point. Maybe all the committee members should have kind of a, a self-reflection too. Like when we start with the youth committee, every year I ask them, do you want to continue? Do you think there's something you can contribute this year? And when the answer is no, we are done, then it's good. Like you've done all these things. All the committees we will talk about today, right, after meeting, they said, I think we should conclude our work. Because we did quite a bit, but now it is someone else's responsibility to make a change. So I know it is like very nice belong to a specific group and work like for ten, fifteen years together. But sometimes that is, that action is also good. Like, okay, where, where should we stop? And try to do other contributions in addition to what we have done.
Um, a couple of things that I noticed is Carrie, you said we can't force people to go through training. I, as I see the orientation of training piece of it, I really think of it as a service to the people who uh, who are joining the committee rather than anything else. And it's also a way to uh, make the whole process more open to people who aren't already part of it. Because if, if the assumption is that we appoint someone on to a committee, they just start going to the meetings and from there they figure out what, what they have to do. Well, that really is kind of like telling people, well, unless you already know it already, we're not interested in having you. I think we, I think people should, should be able to expect that they're doing work, doing their work for the city, that they should have some guidance on what to do. And I see there's a point in here about term limits, which looks like it's not resolved. And I think there's, there's some value to thinking about uh, creating time limits, term limits. It uh, at the uh, at Vermont Legal Aid, we, for many, many years, we didn't have term limits for being on the board of Legal Aid. And people would get on the board and they would feel, feel that, well, I, I just, I'm here and I really can't leave. You know, there's, there's no, there's no limit to my in, investment in time. I might be uh, I might look like I'm abandoning the organization if I decide I'm not going to uh, submit my name again. I uh, and so I think there are situations where people feel that way, that they uh, they're stuck because there's no term. And I think that having a, a term with it uh, could be very valuable to, to people. And any other comments from members of the coun- council? I think, I think we're doing great work at moving this forward.
I'll get some of the comments together. If you've been reviewing it, you want to send me anything to incorporate something that we already have, just let me know. Otherwise, I'll get a final version that incorporates some of the discussion points that we've had tonight. Um, and then I just want to share, you know, just generally where we sit with status. So when we started this process, we had twenty-seven committees. And when we split them into the different tiers, there were ten in tier one. So those are the ones like we have to do legally required to. There were twelve in tier two, and then there were five in tier three. And so just kind of thinking about that a little bit. Um, and then there were nine that were highlighted for further review. We restored three, so homelessness, you know, got elevated from task force to committee, so it's ongoing. Um, Public Arts and then um, the sprinkler uh, committee is something that we have to have. Um, and so that one actually just shifted a little bit, um, as we've been reviewing it. Um, and then the others that are, you know, kind of still hanging out there and they're inactive or on hold or, you know, are um, will be handled administratively are the Investment Committee, the Stormwater Utility Committee, the Restroom Committee, the Social Economic Justice Advisory uh, Committee, the ADA Advisory Committee, um, just leaving twenty-one active committees at this point. And so we are making progress in terms of, you know, figuring out that it doesn't include some of the others that we've, you know, put in play since June. Um, but I'll come back to you with any master, just to kind of, you know, have that. And then that is embedded in the link in the policy. So if you wanted to take a look at the table that we put together, um, I'll come back with a revised table that just shows you a little bit of what um, we've got going on. So uh, we wanted to provide an update, it's an opportunity to do that. So thanks for hearing it and helping back the policy.
Kelly, what you just said reminded me of something from my years on the ADA Committee. I have this big thick book that wa- is our ADA Plan. Um, I haven't been on that committee for years. Would it be useful for me to give you that uh, that book?
That'd be great.
There's so, there's so much in it.
One that I have, you know, on my shelf.
I, I bet it is. There's so much in it and there might even be braille, which might make, I'm not sure, which might make be part of why it's sick.
Yep. Okay.
Any comments from members of the public? Hey, Steve.
I think that Steve would have, yeah, this, this council needs to think very carefully about how we offshore tough issues. We create a committee and then we don't have to deal with it. And unless the committee gets organized, like the homelessness task force never did, to accomplish anything, it's off our plate. We're, we got a committee for that. We don't have to talk about it, you know? The restrooms committee, another prime example, been on the books for several years, never met. And I'm sure nobody gives a restroom, you know? Uh, so are we using committees as a way to uh, send them to the round file, you know? What do we demand of a co- a committee to come up with an actionable plan and do we commit to acting on it? I was attending a couple of meetings of the Complete Streets Committee and they don't understand their fundamental role in forming the capital budget. If they're talking about bike lanes and paving and sidewalks and they have no idea how the capital budget works, but they'll give it to the staff, you know? So what, what good is a committee that doesn't know how to use the law that enables it? Complete Streets is a statutory policy, you know? So I just think we're, we're a bit disingenuous about how we use committees. And I think we really ought to mine the prior committee members. We ought to find out how, how listens to these folks feel, you know? If they s- sat on committees for years and made recommendations and none of it ever went anywhere, they knew, they felt used and they gave up. And we've got a crisis of apathy, resignation and uh, civic hopelessness here. And I don't see anybody talking about it or dealing with it. And this is a place where we could, we could mine and contact all the people who used to be on these committees and really confidentially get their feedback uh, about what's really going on here. Because I, I think it's disingenuous what y'all are doing. I mean, to not even have a list of the committees that are, you know, and to have this being done administratively instead of by the council, oh, we'll just let you put some, uh, put them out to pasture. Uh, and nobody says a word. That's not a staff role. If the committees were created and appointed by council, the council should be doing it. Not letting staff do it.
So I a hundred percent disagree with you, Steve, on this, because this is exactly what we're trying to prevent with this. I don't want there to be a restroom committee where there's no action. I want they, them to be held responsible for an action plan that the council approves. The whole point of this policy and the council did. The whole point of this policy and the council did develop this policy in coordination with the staff because we saw that there was a need. There was a gap and this is an opportunity to prevent exactly what you just said.
I agree, you're on the right track.
So.
Steve, you don't have the check before.
So that is the whole intent of this. I want there to be committees that are useful, that are effective and that are meaningful. I don't want to waste anyone's time. I don't want a committee out there working for two, three years without direction, without purpose, without an action plan, without accountability to the council. That is absolutely not what needs to happen. And that is why this policy is being put in place to prevent that. Not saying that this might solve everything, but I think it's a very good first attempt to try to solve those problems that you just said. And I do appreciate that you bring those up because that is, that is why I spend with my colleagues hours crafting this. So I just hope that you give it time and, and don't criticize it right off the bat. Because with any new policy, it takes time to get into a groove. We got to work out some kinks and try to like, figure out what's going to work, what's not going to work? And how do we continuously improve this? So that is the goal. And I don't think it is disingenuous. I think it is very strategic and thoughtful and, and really thinking about people's time and our time and how we move this work forward. And they are here to help and support. They're not just puppets out there in the public. We need our public to help support our work because we're only these people. So I just wanted to respond to that.
Yeah, I want to agree with everything Adrian just said. And then also I, I just want to correct something. I've, I've heard this many times now from Mr. Whitaker that the restroom committee never met. And that's actually not true. The restroom committee met many times, had, did work, concluded their work. And people can have opinions about whether it was effective or whether it was a good use of time or money. But I just don't want it on the record that the restroom committee never met. Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie.
Just maybe say one thing too, like I think in terms of community participation in committees and, and just more generally in civic life. I think it goes back to the conversation that we had at the beginning of this meeting around culture, tone. You know, I don't think people want to go to committee meetings where they're insulted or badgered. And, you know, I'm sure you all hear that. I hear that all the time. Oh, I would love to be involved in, you know, I would love to run for city council. I would love to do these different things, but why would I do that? When I have to be kind of verbally assaulted all the time? So I just think that that's something we need to think about and address as well.
Yeah.
Elena Gustafson?
I, I just want to say how awesome it is to see the staff and Adrian work on something like this. As somebody who has done organizational development and volunteer development, everything you're doing not only creates an equitable playing field, right? So the term limits, thinking about automation, thinking about process, you're creating a space where the rest of us who are residents here feel like we can get involved. So I, I just want to be sure that you hear from somebody else who lives in Montpelier, how much we applaud. I applaud that particular work. So thank you.
Thank you. So you don't need to vote or anything. You're just going to, or do you want one? You're just going to keep working on it and bring it back.
Speedy, great. You know, being appointed, adopted and put in play.
Great. Thanks. Item number 12, while we moved from the, from the Sarah Show to the Pellen Show. Item 12, Childcare Task Force.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kristin Kiantu of Foster Street, and I'm the committee chair for Montpelier's Childcare Task Force. Thanks for being here to listen to me tonight. So for the past six months, we've been meeting and working on assessing the local childcare needs in addition to identifying strategies that can strengthen Montpelier's economic resilience, workforce retention and the livability through the lens of childcare. We partnered with First Children's Finance, which is a national nonprofit. And with their help, they guided our assessment of Montpelier's childcare needs, helping us figure out how we can preserve and grow our local childcare supply. We also use data from Building Bright Futures, which is Vermont's Early Childhood Data and Policy Center. So I'm just going to go through a few key findings. There are roughly about 400 children under the age of five that live in Montpelier. And according to data from Building Bright Futures, there's only four licensed care providers that exist in the city. Two of them are registered family childcare homes and two of them are center-based programs. And together they have a total licensed capacity for 115 children, which leaves maybe an estimated need, a local need of 285 children. And I'll just add that this number only reflects the children who live in Montpelier and not necessarily the children of those who work in Montpelier, who would maybe like to have childcare close to their workplace. I also spoke to Washington County's Childcare Referral Specialist, who said that the biggest unmet demand in childcare is for infants and toddlers. There are a number of affordability challenges as well. So the average cost of childcare in Washington County is a little under $1,300 a month per child. And the average household income in Washington County is between $60,000 and $65,000 a year, which means the childcare burden is about 23% of a household's income. We have a few recommended strategies. The first is to expand and stabilize upon existing programs. That could look like partnering with licensed facilities to increase capacity safely. It also looks like creating support pathways for aging providers and succession planning for them. We can also look at improving affordability and reducing barriers. And that can look like increasing outreach to families about state subsidies and other financial supports and developing partnerships with local employers to reduce the cost burdens on families. We can also strengthen the city's role in childcare infrastructure. And we can do that by integrating childcare considerations into economic development planning, zoning and redevelopment discussions. So I have a few recommended next steps as far as the childcare task force is concerned. The first is that I think we should pause the task force at this six-month mark. We can preserve the research and these recommendations as groundwork for the city's future economic and community development planning. And we can integrate this work into upcoming economic development initiatives. And I think, well, we think that we can resume the focused childcare strategy efforts once a new city manager is appointed. We believe that strengthening Montpelier's childcare ecosystem is foundational to achieving a vision of a vibrant, equitable and economically resilient community. Thank you.
Thanks. Folks, any questions or thoughts, comments? Thanks for your work on this. Pellen?
Kristin, again, she took the initiative and she did a lot to bring people together and organize meetings. And also, again, I really thank for this group because when they did their work, they said, okay, for now, it is good enough. So I think I will make sure that we include this recommendation in our annual strategic plan. I know on the cover sheet, I think we forgot to highlight, but it is under the economic development. So it is one of our priorities. And all the people I've talked, they are afraid of all this like brief or reports will be left on the shelf. And I will, and this, I know this council, they will make sure that it will be integrated to our initiatives. So thank you again, Kristin.
Thanks. Kristin, you mentioned in the report, talking about developing partnerships with local employers. Are there any employers in the area that are actually providing childcare centers on staff or doing other things to facilitate childcare affordability?
So that wasn't anything that we found in our research yet, but I think that that's something definitely worth looking into when we resume this work.
Thanks. Jim?
I would like to say that this committee is a perfect example of how a committee should be run and report to us. The report that I read that you gave to us was one of the best committee reports I have ever seen. Think you did a fantastic job, all of you who are on it. And this is, this is kind of an example to be held up to every committee. And I'm going to kind of say the same thing of the next thing, so it can save, you know, taking more time. But excellent job of running it, putting it together, reporting to us. It was just incredible what you put down there. I would say I think the National Life actually does run a childcare center for their employees or for somebody because it's in my neighborhood and it's in the house that is owned by the National Life. And I think they have a lot to do with it. So, you know, you might want to reach out to them and just talk to them sometime. I, I know you're all done, but you know, just in the future. I know it's still going because I, you know, every time I'm outside, I hear the kids out there. But great job.
Thanks, Jim. Sal?
I, I agree. I think the committee did a remarkable job. And, you know, this is really a critical issue that with all the housing we're planning on building, I mean, this is only going to get worse if we don't make it an integral part of everything we, everything we plan from here on out. We haven't done a very good job up until now. And I think we, we really need to reverse that because it's, it's becoming overwhelming for lots of folks.
All right. I think there's one thing that's a very important observation here, which is that childcare has been thought of as being just a personal need. And it has to be structural, not just personal. All right. Thank you. Moving on to item 13, Economic Development Subcommittee Report.
Yeah. This committee, Economic Development and Growth Subcommittee, is a city council subcommittee. So we didn't have community members as members of the committee, but we had community members who attended all our meetings and really helped me, Sal and Adrian to understand what is happening in terms of economic development in our town, also what they want to see. So first of all, I just want to thank you, David Cullen, Katie Trotz, John Mayfield and Kristin Cantu for their efforts to, to be with us. And we meet like Thursday, 7:00 PM, because really late time. So Economic Development and Growth Subcommittee has spent the past three months examining Montpelier's economic position and identifying practical next steps. Montpelier has strong assessed a walkable downtown cultural institutions and resilience projects. But we, as a community, face real challenges, complex development processes, limited staff capacity, city staff capacity, housing shortages and public frustration with the stalled projects. So our brief strategic, our, yeah, our brief outlines three key strategies. Clarify rules and roles in the development process. This is what city can do. Establish a coordinated economic development structure. I think city can play the key role in this and leverage resilience as an economic advantage. This committee also proposed a 90-day action plan when the city, when, when we have a new city manager and create clearer processes from the regional partnership and really have some initiatives which will give us early wins as a capital of the state. And if a new city manager chooses, our committee, the subcommittee is ready to expand their term and help city to create a 10-year economic road, roadmap. So it is not a report. It is not something on the paper. It is really focuses on strategies. So this work positioned Montpelier to move from planning to delivery and to rebuild trust by demonstrating visible progress grounded in our shared values. And again, I want to thank you all, the people who serve on this committee. And with this, I'm happy to answer your question, Adrian, if they want to add anything. But I propose three committees, Sanctuary Policy, Childcare Task Force and Economic Development and Growth Subcommittee. And they are all completing their work. If city council wants something else in the future, I think we are ready to support that initiative. But for now, I know I've heard that some, oh my God, Pellen, slow down. We are trying to decrease the committee numbers. I just want to highlight that this committee is, did their work for now. So there will be no more meetings. Thank you.
Sal, do you have anything to add to that?
Well, I, I, I think the work of the Economic Development Committee was certainly an eye-opener for me. I mean, we, we have some people in this community who have some real eco-development jobs. And I think the committee took good advantage of that. And, you know, we, we ought to take a hiatus, but I, I think we, we need, we need, whether it's a committee or a subcommittee or just more empowerment in the Economic Development Office. We need, we need to be paying attention to economic development in a way that I don't think we have recently. I mean, we kind of got sidetracked by the flood. Let's hope that doesn't happen again for a while. But, you know, we have people who have a deep knowledge of how this works and we need to take advantage of that.
Thanks, folks. Adrian?
Speakers who attended was Kevin Chu. We've talked about this before and his presentation to the subcommittee was just really helpful. I mean, you all know I love data, right? So he did his data presentation and talked about housing and just telling the story about housing and how that drives, you know, economic vitality for communities. And I think it's really important. It was eye-opening to me. And I think it'd be really eye-opening to Montpelier. We've talked about this of having some type of, you know, we've talked about this. Where did we talk about this? So many, thank you. Oh, my God, I'm like, I've been in too many subcommittee meetings. So we talked about this in our subcommittee meeting for housing, but having more of a regional or Montpelier-focused conversation around economic growth, housing and having these, really these experts in this field come and talk to Montpelier because we need to have this continued conversation that is constantly beating this drum. Because we can't have naysayers, right? We can't have any NIMBYism. We can't have anyone say no, right? No, we don't want a new hotel. No, we don't want housing. No, we don't want this development because our community will die, right? I mean, that is, I've traveled the world and I've seen downtowns that are abandoned. And that's not going to happen here in Montpelier. But I think with this subcommittee, having those speakers, I think continuing to expand on it, I think would be vital to our city. If it is, if it's in a subcommittee or within the planning department, I don't know what it looks like, but I think we need to be laser-focused on this because I just see risks. I see risks of development in our future. And this, I feel, will help mitigate it by education, by communication, by showing the data, by showing return on investments and just constantly educating our community. So I don't know what that looks like, but I want this to happen.
Yeah. Can I, can I add something? So Katie is here if she wants to talk. But in our meetings, Katie mentioned that Montpelier Alive will be very happy to continue this work. So maybe we can start having that kind of conversations so they can take from here and create another initiative. And my like long-term vision, which I shared with Kelly, I really want to see standalone Economic Development and Growth Department. And my like long-term vision, which I shared with Kelly, I really wanna see standalone Economic Development and Growth Department. So maybe it will not happen today, but maybe in five years. So that department and their staff can go even to D C and just like talk to congresspeople and. Bring um some um money back or some ideas, so we have to be more proactive uh as a city. Again, thank you for everyone.
Thanks, okay. That moves us to. Item fourteen, the publicly requested uh. Item, which uh. Which we placed on the agenda, and I'll, I'll start off the discussion. This has to do with the uh. With the civil action that Stephen Whitaker has uh. Has commenced in uh Washington Superior Division. Or Civil Division of Superior Court to. Suing the city with the various allegations, and. The question has to do with whether we as councils should uh. Should agree to accept service or to waive uh service for uh. For process in this action. Earlier this evening. Steve brought in some copies of some new filings, and I said. That I'm not served, and one of the council members asked me why that was. And what I meant by that, and what I meant by that is that. The city has not been served. I've, I've not been served. The uh plaintiff representing himself cannot serve process. There are methods to serve. Process, including having the sheriff do it. Having uh the defendant, whoever it is, accept service. And, but until one of those things happens. We have not been served, and so. The question is going to be. Uh, what action, if any, we should take to uh. In, in response to his request, and. I anticipate we may. Want to go into executive session, session to discuss this and the uh. Advice we've gotten from our attorney, but uh. But that lays it up, and I will. Open it for uh, for public comment. Steve, I assume you, you'd like to make public comment.
This will be more than three minutes, cuz my agenda item.
It's, it's three minutes, Steve. It's public comment. You're a member of the public, and this.
It's my agenda item.
It's, it's the council's agenda item, start talking. I think everyone's familiar with what, what you're asking for.
Yeah, but you just misrepresented it. You're an attorney, you're not allowed to lie to your council members about what waiver of service is. Waiver. The city was properly served on video. I handed the papers to the clerk. So that's, that's effective service, that's legal effective service. And he's trying to, Jack's trying to tell you that's not service. I didn't hand them to Jack, John handed them to Jack. Then if Jack hands them back, he's still served. So he's playing games here, and it's gonna get him in trouble with the bar. But the issue tonight, it would be honest to talk about waiver of service without talking about the larger pattern of how this. City handles responsibility transparency and public safety. Waiver of service exists to prevent games, waste, and delay. Waiver of service is not a loophole, it's a tool the courts encourage. Because it saves money, it avoids necessary sheriff's fees, unnecessary service fees. And it prevents avoidable delays in cases that need prompt attention, like this one. When a city pretends service hasn't happened or resists waiver as a matter of pride. That doesn't protect the city, it wastes taxpayer money, and it delays judicial oversight. Delay in this case has real consequences, especially for children. This is. This is not an abstract lawsuit. The city's own emails released this morning. Show trenching and soil disturbances being planned in a brownfield with arsenic lead, mercury, and heptic chloride. In the soils with a childcare center there. This is, this is the lawsuit that y'all are trying to avoid? Or that your lawyer is trying to tell you, hey, we could just play games and drag it out and. Let the mayor lie that he hasn't been served, you know, so. Service of process by sheriff, in fact, last time, y'all, y'all need a policy on this, cuz last time. A suit was filed. Your police, it was given to the clerk as the law allows. And the clerk handed it to somebody who handed it to the police chief, and the police chief went and took him back and delivered him to the court. Like, what kind of nonsense do y'all think y'all, what kind of? Other world do you think you're playing in? This is not the way the law or service works in Vermont, and any judge will tell you that. So. This is a, a, a level of confusion that's unprecedented, and it's putting children at risk, and it's certainly putting y'all's credibility on the line. But you should waive service. Or you'll be defaulted, you know, it's, it's as simple as that.
Thank you. Are there any comments from any other member of the public, or? Folks, are you inclined to go into executive session? We uh. This is one of those items where we would take. Two, a two-step process, one uh motion to find that uh. The public, public, premature public knowledge would place the public body at a disadvantage. To discuss pending civil litigation.
That's not what you put on the agenda. You put the threat of civil litigation on the agenda. You don't have the grounds to go into executive session.
So if I might, Jack, so the council can decide to go into executive session at any point if it would like to. Those are the rules, Steve, so.
Made a different agenda item.
No, it does not actually have to be on the agenda as executive session. They can decide and find that they wanna go into executive session if they would like to. And that is well within council's purview. Just because you have a different understanding of the law, we're gonna go with what legal counsel has provided us with. Thank you.
So folks, um. Is there a motion to make that uh required finding?
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll make that finding.
And so you're, you're making a motion that premature general public knowledge would clearly place the public body. At a substantial disadvantage. In pending or probable civil litigation to which the public body is or may be a party.
Yes.
Was there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I wanna.
You're opposed, Jim?
No, I wanna ask a question.
Okay, sure.
Are we going into executive session?
Well, pending the uh outcome of the vote.
And where is the link?
It was just emailed to you a little while ago.
Okay, oh yeah.
Okay. I think the, I, did you vote on that motion, Jim?
Uh, no, I'll say that this is a. Good use of executive session.
Okay. The motion is carried, we will go into executive session.
So we only passed the finding.
Oh, right, you need to do the second, second step. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
I'm gonna move to go into executive session, but I, I don't, I don't have the B S A.
Okay.
Uh, data, the, the specific language.
And at that point, it's moved to go into executive session to discuss uh pending mitigation.
So move.
And that includes bringing the city manager with us.
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll. All right, I'll give everybody a chance. Have you logged in?
I'm sorry, sorry.
All right, is there a motion to come out of executive session?
I'm going to come out of executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
All is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are out of executive session. Okay, next item on the agenda is item number fifteen, other business, no other business. Next up, we have council reports. Adrian, we can start at your end.
I'm in this meeting.
Carrie?
Yeah, I just want to mention a training that I went to recently that the LCT put on about short-term rentals and it was fascinating. There were representatives from towns from all over the state there talking about their different experiences and what I, there's a lot that I can that came out of that, but sort of the the basic thing was that the LCT has a model ordinance and they don't recommend that you just adopt this ordinance, but that you look at it as a place to start and I and I I think we're we're in a very different place than a lot of other towns in Vermont are, but um I think it would be a great idea to to pull that model ordinance out, take a look at it, have some conversations about it. Also, the other thing I learned from that is that there is very good data available through Vermont Housing Finance Agency about how many short-term rentals there are, how much money people are making on them, how you know, how often that they're rented out and so we I remember us having conversations about, we can't do anything yet because we don't have all the data and we need a registry, so we have the data, but there is data out there that tells us what's going on with short-term rentals in my popular well enough for us to be able to decide what, if anything, we want to do.
Great, thank you. Sal?
Uh just to brief, though, we're we're we were meeting on Friday, uh meeting of the uh Country Club Road RFP Subcommittee. Uh Friday is the the due date uh for the submissions of the RFQ. So we'll um we won't be discussing our meetings today at a clock, but um next week or in December third, we're going to review the qualifications, so we'll be talking about the RFP this Friday and then reviewing the results from the uh RFQ, uh pardon?
Great, thanks. Ben?
I know.
Good.
No report.
No report from you?
No reports.
Jim, do you have a report?
Yes, I do.
All right.
Um first of all, the housing task force met today and um they have four requests. They want to get um a listing of all city properties that we have. They want a record of the two lawyers that Kelly talked to when I brought up that um you know, we don't, you know, when I asked about when we designate a camping area and Ben said, oh, no, it's it's too much money and I asked that to be looked into and was found out that we don't have to provide any services. We probably should, but we don't have to. And Kelly got uh something from two lawyers and the uh housing task force would like to see those two. Uh the other thing is they want to be put on the agenda coming up. Doesn't have to be the next one, but they want to be on an agenda to come in and talk. And the last thing is they want to have Evelyn put into on front porch forum, an advertisement for recruitment of committee members because there were only three of them there today and it's been very sporadic with some of the others, so they're looking to trying to get maybe three or four new members. So those four requests come from the um meeting today that we had. Now, I want to make a couple of comments about what I saw on from, you know, viewing. I have never seen in my twelve-plus years the council walk out on a citizen. Looked like a coordinated effort to me. I mean, you just talked about respect. You didn't show respect to the person that you walked out on. I mean, little bit of hypocrisy there. You just, even Jack said, we're leaving and like sheep, you all followed him. I guess you don't have a mind of your own. I also want to talk about that speech.
I I I'm, you are violating the agreements that we have.
I am talking. You are not, I'm not listening to you. I'm talking. Okay?
What recourse do we have here?
Jim?
This is not okay.
It's not okay for you to interrupt me. I didn't hear anything in that speech about backstabbing people who wanted to take away my right to vote on the city manager. You're a bunch of backstabbing cowards is what you all are. And you do not, you are just hypocrite hypocritical in what you say. So I'm, you know, I'm not going to change and you don't like it, too bad.
I don't like to be treated like that, sorry.
Carrie, Carrie, go ahead if you, uh this is the the con- the constant name calling from you towards other council members is is grossly inappropriate, Jim. Um mayor's report, I just have one thing, one, well, I I had only one thing. I will say that I I continue to think that decorum is very important and what uh what happened earlier tonight uh was because um a member of the public had chosen not to adhere to the uh to the rules governing general business and appearances. And and he was stated that he was told that he would be uh limited to the items that were uh not on the agenda and he insisted on discussing items that were on the agenda. We need to have the ability to uh have regular procedure, so the council meetings, which are scheduled to uh for the council to be able to discuss items and make decisions. Council meetings need to be able to proceed without uh with a unreasonable interruption and I'm going to continue to adhere to that. On a brighter note, while we've been meeting tonight, John Snell from the Tree Board uh posted on Facebook a photo and a report of uh an effort uh today of the Tree Board planting five Freeman maples at the cemetery along with the uh Patrick and Carl from the from the cemetery team. And so the Tree Board continues to do work, great work. They'll be doing planting a dozen or so oak trees along Route Two in the spring. And so we spent a lot of time talking about what committees do for the city. This is a concrete example of it. The Tree Board is is one of those committees that literally gets their hands dirty by by planting trees that that we all benefit from. Clerk's report?
Great to be here with you tonight and um and to be a part of your democratic process and um it's great to come here sometimes and but other than that, I don't have anything.
Okay, thanks. And your support?
Just a couple of things. Um Jim, for clarity on your homeless item, um there was one link overview that I recall, so I'll look that one up. I don't believe that I got two, so I just wanted to be clear about that. Um and then in terms of um task force um meeting earlier, um did you have a quorum? Just curious. Okay, well, just for the record, those are
Well, there was not a quorum.
Okay, just wanted to clear clarify in questions. Thank you, Carrie. I really appreciate that. I'll try to get that information together. Um two other things, uh we will be having a special meeting on Friday um for a wedged open meeting law violation. Thank you for all that responded. Uh we'll take that up done. Um the other thing is just um you know, some of the comments that have been made around Country Club Road are false and inaccurate. We have been trying to work with the record to make sure that we are responding as best we can, but earlier this evening um there was the assertion that, you know, adequate testing was not done at Country Club Road. Um we do have an approved DEC plan and we um did not disturb contaminated soil, so I just want that to be on the record. I also want folks to take a look at the Country Club Road webpage, which I'll put in my manager's weekly, um which has a bunch of facts, has um a lot of the reports that um really indicate that we are in good standing with the state and so to assert that we're not is false. Um and I will continue to just take note of uh comments that are made um to just make sure that we're getting it on the record because it is not okay to disrupt the process and just disrupt the work that we're doing with false information. Um we are in good standing. So that's what I'll say about that. Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. And with that, I was there is a brief moment where I thought we'd be adjourning before ten, but but it was not to be, so ten oh seven and we are adjourned.